To the pride of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This, this meeting really, from my perspective, came out of a number of other county council meetings that we had had where members of the public were coming in and speaking about their concerns about the manner in which we incinerated our trash, the manner in which we handled our solid waste. And rather than us continue to speak about it in a, you know, sort of in a disorganized and unplanned manner during the public comment sections of county councils meetings, we thought that we should perhaps act like a real legislative body would and have a hearing that would afford council the ability to hear, and hopefully the solid waste authority, to hear the perspectives of experts in this area, to hear and to provide also another forum for the public to express its concerns, thoughts, beliefs, feelings on the subject matter. So that was really the purpose of the hearing that we called tonight. We are going to call a number of invited witnesses that are, Ms. Locke, from our sustainability, our chief sustainability officer has helped to organize along with others in the government, to offer their perspectives on the manner in which Delaware County deals with its solid waste. And then we will have an opportunity for public comments. So I guess I would invite the rest of council if they wish to offer any comments before we get rolling. All right. Well, hearing none then, I would ask to hear from the, the co-chair of our Delaware County Sustainability Commission, Ms. Carol Martzoff, if she would please come to the podium and offer her perspectives. We appreciate you being here tonight.
Good evening, council members, county staff, and residents. My name is Carol Martzoff, and I am co-chair of the Delaware County Sustainability Commission. We are charged with recommending best practices to the council on environmental and energy issues, and to create the county's first sustainability plan. The Office of Sustainability wanted me to share that there are collecting additional public comment through the Sustained Delco email through the end of the day tomorrow, Friday, October 1st, and will be sharing the comments with council and the commission. The full email is listed on the screen. The seventeen members of the commission are eager to learn from the presenters and hear from the residents tonight to help inform our work in the upcoming months and years. County staff and commission members will, will also be embarking on an outreach initiative in the next few months to hear the community's voice on elements of the county's sustainability plan. Please stay tuned to the county's sustainability social media channels and website to learn how you can get involved. We are excited to start work with the solid waste municipal authority and the new consultant who will be working on the county's next ten-year solid waste management plan. We have recently created a zero-waste committee to help manage that process. The commission was happy that the RFP language for the consultant was updated to include the implementation of zero-waste practices in the county, and we will be working with the consultant on extensive outreach, extensive outreach efforts during the planning process to gather feedback from all communities. Zero-waste, as defined by the Zero-Waste International Alliance, is the "conservation of all resources by means of responsible production, consumption, reuse, and recovery of products, packaging, and materials without burning, and no discharges to land, water, or air that threaten the environment or human health." Unquote. Zero-waste in Delaware County is a tall order with lots of moving pieces. The commission is committed to helping the county and its residents figure out the complicated pieces that make up our solid waste management system and move towards zero-waste. Thank you. Next, I would like to bring up Mike McNichol, Director of the Delaware County Solid Waste Authority.
I would just note also that, you know, if council has questions for any of our speakers, feel free to ask away or make any comments along the way, too. I don't, I don't, don't know if that was made clear, but I want to invite all the council members to do so. Thank you, Mr. McNichol.
Thank you, and for inviting me, and good evening, everyone. My name is Mike McNichol. I've been the Director of the Solid Waste Authority for the last sixteen years. Before that, I was the Assistant, Assistant Director for two. Tonight, I just wanted to give you some of the history of the Solid Waste Authority, its formation, explain how we currently operate, and maybe clear up any misconceptions or questions anyone may have about why we do what we do, and why we do it that way now. Delaware County Solid Waste Authority was established originally by the county commissioners as the Delaware County Incinerator Authority in nineteen fifty-four, in its attempt to find ways to accept, handle, and process close to five hundred thousand tons of residential and commercial trash being generated annually within the county, at that time, in a safe and efficient manner, while holding the line against costs to the municipalities and to the residents of Delaware County. To that end, three incinerators were constructed in the late nineteen fifties and were run by the authority until their closure in nineteen seventy-nine. At that time, two of the incinerators, one in Chester Township and one in Marple, were converted to transfer stations, which still serve today. For reference, a transfer station serves to alleviate the burden on trash collectors by taking them out of the disposal process, saving them time, and allowing them to be able to get back to their collection routes more quickly. The authority was charged with the responsibility of construction and operating of those two transfer stations, while contracting with private entities for the transportation and disposal of all trash coming into the county. In nineteen eighty-four, county council adopted a resolution calling for the acquisition of the Cole Brookdale landfill in Earl Township, excuse me, Berks County. In nineteen eighty-five, the purchase was completed, and the landfill was renamed Rolling Hills. Rolling Hills would serve as the disposal site for all of the county's trash processed at those two transfer stations until nineteen ninety-two, when the Chester Resource Recovery Facility was opened. The facility was owned and operated by the Westinghouse Corporation until it was turned over to American Refuel in nineteen ninety-seven. The site would later be acquired by Covanta Energy in two thousand and five. Beginning in nineteen ninety-two, the authority incinerated trash, as well as taking roughly a third of that total amount, to the Rolling Hills landfill in an attempt to minimize cost due to extra-waste agreements that were in place with the Resource Recovery Facility. By going to Chester rather than Berks County, we were able to significantly reduce the time and amount of trucks on the road, while still performing the same service, and at the same time extending the life of the Rolling Hills landfill. The authority received financial assistance from the county with the agreement that one day we would become independent and financially self-supporting. By two thousand and nine, the authority was funded solely by tipping fees charged for trash and ash taken in at the transfer stations and at the landfill, and no longer receives financial assistance from the county or its taxpayers. Excuse me. County council is still responsible for appointing board members on our seven-person Board of Directors, but no one currently on our administrative staff is employed by the county or receives any compensation from the county. That's kind of the history, and now I'd like to explain the current process. The Solid Waste Authority does not pick up anyone's residential trash. We serve as the facilitator, or a go-between, if you will, between the municipalities and final disposal. In an attempt to reduce costs to the municipalities, we have entered into agreements with them to bring us their trash, which allows us to negotiate with disposal sites as a whole and not as forty-nine separate entities, which has enabled us to keep tipping fees the lowest of any of the surrounding counties. We also take commercial trash at our sites to further subsidize the authority. All of the county trash is brought to one of our two transfer stations, or directly to Covanta currently. Of the forty-nine municipalities, sixteen utilize their own vehicles to collect their residential waste. Twenty-four are contracted with private haulers for collection service, and nine require through an ordinance that the residents contract on their own with a private waste contractor, also known as a subscription service. Every site in the state which receives trash, be it a transfer station, a landfill, or a Resource Recovery Facility, is regulated by the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection. Sites are subjected to quarterly inspections at a minimum, and all waste handling practices must be submitted to and approved by the DEP as part of their solid waste action plan. Every site must be permitted by the DEP, and those permits are subject to review and renewal. Our permits are for a period of ten years currently. Any changes to procedures or the physical plant must also be approved by a permanent modification process. Any truck hauling waste must meet DEP requirements, and is subjected to spot checks by the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation. Trucks dumping at one of our transfer stations must also be permitted by the authority to ensure proper licensing, registration, and insurance requirements are met. Every site accepting waste must also have radiation detectors and a DEP-approved plan to properly dispose of any materials entering the facility, excuse me, which meet the definition of hazardous. When a truck enters one of our transfer stations, it passes through our radiation detectors and is weighed. From there, they will enter our tipping floor and dump their load. The truck then goes back out to be weighed again now that it's empty. Any, any truck setting off a radiation detector is not permitted to dump that trash. The material must be located and identified by a certified member of our staff and reported to the DEP. The DEP then dictates to us how the problem must be resolved. The scales are operated by the authority's weighmasters, and all billing goes through our offices. A ticket is produced for billing purposes and to ensure that proper records are kept for DEP review at time of inspection. Each site in Pennsylvania that receives waste has daily, weekly, and yearly limits as to the amounts of waste that they can accept, and they cannot operate outside those hours outlined in their permit without approval. Excuse me. Currently, we are allowed to receive twelve hundred tons of waste at each of our transfers daily. The types of waste deemed acceptable is also regulated to ensure safety and to encourage recycling. The authority has contracted with Waste Management for the processing of trash at both of our transfer station sites. Our current contract with Waste Management runs until the year twenty twenty-eight. That contract includes Waste Management loading the trash into permitted trailers and the transportation to an authority-approved and directed disposal site. Waste Management is responsible for contracting with the hauler, taking waste to its final destination. They are also responsible for the maintenance of the sites in accordance with all DEP regulations. Prices in the contract, excuse me, are dictated by the final disposal site. As part of our solid waste action plan, we have three DEP-approved disposal sites where we can direct our trash currently. Annually, we move over four hundred thousand tons of county trash. The majority of our trash currently goes to the Covanta Resource Facility in Chester, approximately three hundred and seventy thousand tons per year. As you know, our contract with Covanta expires in April of twenty twenty-two. Covanta's proximity to both of our transfer stations has made it the quickest and least expensive place to dispose of our trash. The remainder of our trash currently goes to the Waste Management-owned and-operated Fairless Hills landfill. Due to capacity concerns, we are limited in the amount that we can bring to that site, and currently bring them about thirty thousand tons annually. It is a much more expensive option, since we add the cost of disposal as well at their site. This is also included in the contract we have with them. The final place we can take our trash, but currently do not, is the Rolling Hills landfill that we own and operate, up in Berks County. Due to capacity and transportation issues, Rolling Hills is our emergency dump site for county trash. Currently, we maintain contracts with trash haulers in the Berks County area, and as part of our contract with Covanta, we accept ash residue from the burning of waste at the Chester and Plymouth sites. We receive a tipping fee for the ash, which is also a beneficial use, DEP-approved material for mandated daily cover up at the landfill. We take in about four hundred and fifty thousand tons of ash from Covanta yearly. For reference, we take in about two hundred thousand of trash up there, so it's a seventy-thirty split.
Excuse me, Mr. McNichol. I let the chairman know, I would just advise him on the invited speakers when we got to the targeted time. I'm sure the chairman will probably let you know to continue, but that has been ten minutes. Thank you.
Yeah, please. Do you have, do you have much more, Mr. McNichol?
Uh, no, very little. Another page, yeah, sorry. As I said, roughly one-third of the total tons we take in at Rolling Hills is contracted waste from outside sources, for which we receive a negotiated price. The landfill has just recently been awarded an expansion permit, should we choose to pursue it, which would add significant life to the landfill. The life of the landfill, the length of the additional life, excuse me, would be contingent on the mix of trash and ash we take there going forward. If we do not choose to go forward with the expansion, we will be responsible still for the closing of the landfill, a very expensive proposition. In addition to the responsibility for waste disposal, the county recycling coordinator also works out of the authority office. The coordinator's duties include compiling recycling totals and assisting the municipalities in filing for government recycling grant monies. The municipalities with more than five thousand residents are mandated to have their own curbside recycling pickups. Smaller towns often follow suit. The coordinator shares information with municipal administrators on changes in market, technology, and ways they can enhance their individual recycling programs. The coordinator is also available to attend town and business meetings to provide information, and often, before COVID, give presentation to county schools on the benefits and importance of recycling. The coordinator also works in conjunction with the surrounding counties to put on twenty-seven hazardous waste collection events yearly, four of which are located within Delaware County's borders. The authority also empties and disposes of the recycling collected in igloos around the county, as well as recycling paper from government offices in the county. The disposal of this recycling is included in our Waste Management contract. As a wrap-up, I provided an overview of the authority's role on the last slide. Our Board of Directors, in conjunction with county council and the Sustainability Committee, is continually exploring better, more environmentally friendly ways to dispose of trash. They are committed to the reduction of waste and the enhancement of recycling throughout the county. Increased dialogue and a better understanding are an excellent way to start. There are many things which will need to be considered and addressed in the coming months, as decisions are made which will greatly impact all of us. As Director of the Solid Waste Authority, I remain, excuse me, I remain committed to carrying out that vision. I thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Mr. McNichol. Perhaps we could raise the screen in front of us, then. We might have a few questions, if you could stay at the podium for us, please. Any questions from council?
Yeah, I do a few. And first, thank you for coming in today, Mr. McNichol. I'm not sure if you can see me over here. My first question is, just given the fact that you obviously have a pretty significant contract up for renewal in April, I'm curious to hear what the Solid Waste Authority has done in anticipation of that. What have you done to look at alternatives to the renewal of that contract? What work's been done to see that, for example, if you ceased to utilize Covanta, and you were instead to send all of the trash to the landfill that we control in Berks County, and ceased to take the ash from there, what would that do? And I know the math gets a little complicated, but it shouldn't be too terribly rough, you know, the sort of the split between ash to trash if they were all to be trash. What does that look like? And I guess, just, again, asking it more generally, what alternatives have been looked at? Because anytime, you know, we have a contract that's coming up for renewal, we're looking at alternatives, right? We're looking at other vendors, we're looking at what the options are, so that we don't go into that feeling like we've got a gun to our head, where we have to renew because we don't have any alternatives.
Sure. I know our board has been working with the Sustainability Committee, and I know we are coming for council next month with different scenarios as to how the finances would work. To travel, if we were to say, as you, as you said, take all of our trash up to Rolling Hills, that would greatly reduce the capacity up there that we garner from the expansion. So we would have to make adjustments in terms of what we take in in trash, and of course, we would lose the ash by not working with Covanta, most likely. We'd probably lose about eight million dollars in revenue in trash and ash up at the landfill, and we would have to pay for our daily cover, which would cost roughly two million dollars a year. Currently, we use the ash that we receive from Covanta, which is approved by DEP as a cover. So, as you said, there's a lot of moving parts, and beg and borrow from here, and steal from there, and that's what we're doing right now, is we're going through different scenarios. What if we took X amount? What if we took all of it to Covanta and none of it to Covanta, some the Fairless Hills, some the Rolling Hills? So that's a constant process that's going on. I know, as I said, we're, we're due to present in front of council next month.
Yeah, I mean, that really seems like the crux of the question, doesn't it?
Sure.
I think, understanding, you know, instead of just the one-minute answer here, I think we really do need to understand what that, what that math looks like.
Absolutely.
And how you're kind of working through it. Because just by my rough, you know, understanding of it, if we cease to take what's currently two-thirds of the tonnage in ash, because we stopped taking it from Covanta.
Right.
And we send, you know, what, four hundred thousand tons of our own trash, I realize there's a volume difference between trash and ash, but how does that kind of work out? I think that's really what I'm trying to get at. And if there's other trash coming into our landfill that's not ours, that's another big piece of the equation, right?
Yeah, all the trash.
What if we cease to take that, and we're just sending our own? So I guess, that gets at really the capacity issues and understanding what our timeframe would be with the expansion, the vertical expansion. And then I think the other piece is just understanding the dollar figures.
Absolutely.
Understanding what that would look like. Realizing that, you know, I don't think the dollar figures need to necessarily neutralize out, right? We're, we're living in a time where there's a lot of money being invested in communities like ours to think long-term, and I think we could tap into some of those to offset any revenue loss that might be there. So I think that's, that's the analysis that I'm hoping the Solid Waste Authority is doing, and I certainly would ask that we be involved in that, in that process.
Yeah, absolutely. And just real quickly, we're trying to find ways to reduce waste as well, because in a scenario, like you pointed out, where we go to one of these landfills, that's going to triple the amount of time we're on the road. That's, we're going to need three times as many trucks. So there's a lot of things to figure out. It's not a, you know, if, if this, then that. It's, it's really involved, and there's a lot of figures that need to be figured out.
Understood. And that actually gets to my second question, which is, you say that you're doing significant efforts to reduce trash. I think, we also have to be thinking that way, right? If, if our goal is zero-waste, my question to you as a, you know, representative of the Solid Waste Authority is, what are we doing to drive that? Because when we have a contract with Covanta that has baked into it a take-or-pay structure, where if we don't meet certain levels, we have to pay them anyway, that to me seems like it runs in complete conflict with the idea that we're trying to drive communities to throw less trash away. So, you know, when you say that our dumping fees are the least around, I have kind of mixed emotions about that. On the one hand, I'd like to see that, you know, things are cheaper. But when we're talking about trash, the incentive structure there is really kind of perverse. You know, you make it cheaper, people are going to throw stuff out more quickly without thinking, you know, what in here can be recycled, what can be reused, what can be composted?
Absolutely. I totally agree with what you said. I know one of the things we've discussed with Covanta is doing away with those guaranteed minimums, so that there won't be that push to reach a certain level of trash. We continue to work within recycling, and I know Christine, who's on our board, has been very solid in looking for other ways to, to reuse materials. And we're constantly looking for new ways to, to use glass, or cardboard, or whatever it may be, to give it a more beneficial use, a second life. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. McNichol, along the same lines of Mr. Madden's questions, how much, you spoke about the fact that our landfill takes in trash from local contractors. Do you have a sense ballpark with the, with the volume of trash that we get from others into our landfill, other than sort of from ourselves?
It's about two hundred thousand tons.
Two hundred thousand tons. So that, I mean, by my quick math, if we're getting four hundred and fifty thousand tons of ash, and maybe the volume there is, what, one to three for?
Yeah.
For trash? So I call that a hundred and fifty thousand. The equivalent of a hundred and fifty thousand, if, if we got rid of that ash and we got rid of the local contractors, we're we're pretty well able to handle our own trash without, I think you said that if we didn't use Covanta, we would, I forget that, we would greatly reduce our capacity. If we didn't take it from other contractors and we didn't take Covanta's trash, we've, even if we didn't reduce trash, which, you know, I think, I think we're probably all, I hope we're all in agreement that we shouldn't reduce trash, we still wouldn't increase our capacity, we wouldn't reduce our capacity anymore quickly. Do I have the math roughly right?
That's correct, but again, that would bring up different issues, as I said, with the travel and making up the lost revenues.
Yeah, I don't mean to say that that's the only issue, but that is, that is one that I have heard often spoken of as being a great impediment. Do you know, the terms of those contracts with the local contractors to take the 200,000 tons of trash? How, are they, can you, do you have a sense of, you know, can they be canceled? Are they up for, are they expiring?
They're up for, most, if not all, are up for renewal yearly.
Okay, so it's not like we're stuck for 20 years with these?
Correct, no, absolutely not.
Okay. And you also mentioned, I wasn't aware that we took ash from the Plymouth site from Covanta. That's another one of their incinerators?
Yes.
As well? Okay. The last question I have, you mentioned early on that our tipping fees are much lower than other counties. Can you give me a sense of, you know, ballpark, what ours are versus others?
Ours are, excuse me, ours are 58 for residential trash. The other counties range from 64, 65, all the way up to over 100.
And what, 58 relative to what? $58 per customer?
Per ton.
Per ton?
Yes.
Okay.
The average household generates about a ton and a half of trash a year.
Okay.
If that answers you or helps you at all.
Fair enough. All right, thank you.
Can I just ask a couple of follow-up questions? And I must admit to my colleagues on county council, I've had the advantage of seeing some of what's going to be presented to council next month in connection with the financing. But I am not 100% sure, but I seem to recall from one of the meetings with Ms. Lightzel, the, you know, the accountant for the authority, that for every $5 we increase tipping fees, it generates roughly $2 million in revenue, gross revenue?
That's my understanding. Ms. Lightzel's here.
Okay. So, we're talking about if we were to go to the scenario of preserving, and again, I'm just trying to make sure everybody's seeing both sides of the equation here, not taking a position on it. But if we were to look to truck all of our waste up, you know, that couldn't otherwise be recycled, up to the landfill in Berks County, and we know there's going to be a $5 a ton increase just to cover the annual cost of cover, because we're no longer going to have the Covanta ash, correct?
Correct.
We also, if I am remembering correctly from the material that's going to be presented to council, there's roughly $9 million a year in revenue generated by the third-party trash that's taken in, and there's another $9 million a year that's paid for the ash. So while the ash is a deeply discounted item when it's deposited at our landfill, it also offsets the need to pay another $2 million in fees.
Can you just repeat that again? It was $9 million from the ash and $9 million from third-party trash?
Yes.
Yes.
So that's 18 million, which if you divide that by two, gets us to nine. Multiply that by five, that's another $45. So we're increasing, we're essentially to take over all of the capacity at the landfill and forego Covanta without accounting for the additional costs of transporting trash. Do you know what it costs us per ton under the existing waste management contract to transport trash to Rolling Hills?
It would cost about roughly $43 a ton.
$43 a ton?
Yes.
Okay, so before we add that on, we are going from $58 a ton to $108 a ton, and then we are adding another 40, that's in our trash fees, just to cover current operating expenses, which I was surprised, I thought if we only took our ash at the landfill, we would actually be, or not our ash, our trash, and, you know, didn't take any third-party stuff, that it would actually, we could possibly scale back the size of the operations at the landfill. But I think I was told by our landfill operator that's not right, because trash is actually, takes more people to manage, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we would still have the same costs. We're not going to be reducing our costs. So...
Just to, if I could ask a question, Ms. Rither, do we pay Covanta to take our trash?
Right now, we do pay Covanta to take our trash. What do we pay them?
Roughly $23 a ton.
Okay, so that...
Those costs will be...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That was the waste management price to take it. I apologize. It's about $43 a ton there.
Okay, so that offsets, that offsets the additional, we're not paying them, but that offsets the transportation charge?
Right.
Okay, so if it's $43 a ton to drive it up there by waste management and we were paying Covanta?
Right.
So that's a wash, then?
That part, yes, absolutely.
Okay, but we'd be going, we're looking at roughly a $50 a ton increase just to make up the revenue that we've got right now, right?
If that's the direction the board chooses to go, absolutely.
I just want people to understand that there's a cost side to this equation, and it's, and I'm mindful of Mr. Madden's earlier comment, that, you know, we don't, this isn't a decision just about dollars and cents, but I don't think you can ignore dollars and cents, and that's all. I'm just trying to make sure everybody's aware of that. The other thing that I wanted to say is, in order to be able to do this, we do need the additional capacity at the landfill, correct?
Absolutely.
So the expansion project would have to go forward, right?
For that to be an option, absolutely, 100% has to happen.
And so whatever the debt service is, on top of that $50 that we've determined we're just going to have to, at today's rates, it might be, you know, so on top of that $50 that we'd have to generate, we're also going to have to generate through fee increases the cost of debt service, correct?
That would be my guess, but again, that's...
Yeah, and again, I don't, I don't know what that's going to work out to be. It probably depends a lot on the interest rate and everything else, but...
Sure. Just for my own clarification, the expansion has to happen regardless, right? That is a wash in this analysis.
If we're still using Covanta, even?
No, yeah, it's, it is, the expansion, if we intend to use it for any purpose, has to happen. If we intend to leverage the value of the asset in any way, maybe not by our use, but by use by a third-party, potentially selling the landfill, you know, that's an option that could fund a lot of recycling and zero-waste infrastructure, but even then, we'd still have to go ahead. But I don't think, there's something that, I don't think Mr. McNichol has pointed out that I don't know if this council or the audience is aware of, there is a lawsuit that has been filed by two residents to challenge the expansion permit. And while, you know, that has to be evaluated and determined if it's something that should stop the expansion or hold the expansion up, it, you know, it's out there, and it's a threat to the permit and the ability to expand the landfill.
Has there been any, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Has there been any analysis on if the county were to sell the landfill, what money that could generate?
There was a study done years and years ago that those numbers would be useless now. We have not done one recently, no.
My questions are along those lines. I'd like to know a little bit about what the market is, the capacity is for trash that is not incinerated, that's not in our landfill, that's in other waste management or other facilities. Is there the capacity in the market to absorb that?
The other landfill that we use is Fairless Hills Waste Management landfill. They currently take 30,000 tons of ours. They don't want more right now.
And are there others?
I'm sorry?
Are there other places that could take it?
None of them are particularly close, certainly not as close, so they would have their own challenges, but we have not found one that would be willing to take 400,000 tons yet. I think if we were going to take all of our trash and landfill, Rolling Hills would be the only place that could probably take it.
Would it be possible to divide and conquer and find...
As I said earlier, that's one of the things we're looking at, you know, taking from here and there and all of that.
Yeah.
But then we would have to reopen contracts with waste management to, you know, come up with a price to where they take it.
And it's my understanding that we're sort of in the minority, that most counties are not in the business of operating a landfill.
That's correct.
Right.
Yeah.
And that a permit, a landfill permit is probably quite valuable.
Very.
Yes.
Absolutely.
So that is going to be part of our analysis, is whether if we, if we got out of this business and became a customer, you know, what that would cost.
Sure.
And offset by what we make by selling that permit.
I think it has to be part of any analysis, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And is that an analysis that can be done? I mean, can we do a, you know, market test on what, you know, given comparable landfills that have been sold, can we do, you know, an analysis on what that, what the value might be that's there if we were to sell that?
I don't know if that's already been in the works, but certainly we can, absolutely.
That'd be great, yeah, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council for Mr. McNichol?
I guess just following up on something that was previously said by one of my colleagues. So as we do this analysis, are you also going to be giving us information on what the trickle-down effect will be on our municipalities and how that will affect what their rates are at the local level?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, and another thing that needs to be considered is, you know, the more we landfill, the tougher it's going to be to run those two transfer stations efficiently, you know, because when you take in trash, you have 24 hours to get it out of there and dispose of it. The longer it takes you to get rid of each load of trash, the more it piles up, you know. There's limited space in these two transfer stations. So again, it's part of, part of any equation, depending on what direction you want to go. There's 100 different arms to that.
Mr. McNichol, I'm sorry, Dr. Sheller, were you done? When you're doing this equation, and I don't know, I don't mean this to be a loaded question, but how do you think about, if you do at all, and perhaps you're not, perhaps the authority is not equipped to do this, but how do you think at all about the cost to the community of Chester, the health cost? I mean, we're talking about, we've spoken a lot about this much per ton, that much per ton. There are, there are costs that are borne by residents who live near the incinerator in terms of diminished health outcomes, in terms of, you know, diminished business opportunities. How would all, how if at all do you calculate that in the equation?
As I said, all of these sites are DEP-approved, permitted, inspected. You know, to answer your question honestly, have I done that? No, I have not done that. I know the board is looking at every conceivable thing. That's why we're doing things like tonight, to figure out the best, the cleanest, the most environmentally friendly way to do, whatever we have to do, and without being a burden on citizens in any way, you know, financially, environmentally, or otherwise.
All right, thank you. Anything else from Mr. McNichol? All right, thank you for coming in, sir.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. All right, I think our next scheduled speaker is from the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, and I gather it's via a pre-recorded video on the Title V Permit and Municipal Solid Waste Management Plan Revision Process. So we'll roll tape.
Hello, my name is Sean Mountain, and I am the Program Manager for the Waste Program in Southeast Regional Office. I appreciate the invitation to provide the Delaware County Council with some insight into the county waste planning process. I will provide a brief overview of the county municipal waste management planning process. For those interested in more complete information, I refer you to our guidance document on County Municipal Waste Management Plan revisions, which has been shared with the county previously. The primary purpose of a county municipal waste management plan is to assure that there is enough disposal capacity available for all the projected municipal waste generated within the county for the next 10 years, and that the county has the right to use that capacity. There are many options available for counties to ensure that they have 10 years of waste-disposable capacity available. Counties should use the method that best suits their needs. The first step in the process requires that the county provide written notice to the department when the plan revision development begins. The notice must include a description of the proposed revisions to the plan that the county intends to make. After receiving the notice, DEP must decide within 30 days whether the proposed plan revisions are substantial or non-substantial. This designation significantly changes the public review and comment process for the plan, because plans deemed substantial require additional opportunities for public participation and municipal ratification. The county may choose the substantial revision process if they wish, even if the department has determined the revision to be non-substantial. As of right now, Delaware County has not yet provided this notification to us at DEP. As part of the DEP review, we will ensure that all applicable requirements have been satisfied. This includes a check that the plan is complete, accurate, and meets all the regulations. Also, we will make sure that the right procedures are followed during development and approval of the plan, including requirements for public participation. Please know that this review process is intended to be a collaborative one between DEP and the county. Our review staff will work closely with the county. We expect and plan for back-and-forth communication during this development process. We remain committed to working with the county to ensure that the final revised plans are in compliance with all the requirements. In summary, DEP regulations require that this plan be updated every 10 years. The current Delaware County plan is good until July 13, 2024. The regulations require that the process be started three years prior to expiration, and that process is starting now. We look forward to working with Delaware County and the Solid Waste Management Authority as you move forward with this process. Thank you for your time and attention.
All right, that was some solid production there.
Hello, I am Jim Rebarcak, and I am the Air Quality Program Manager for DEP's Southeast Regional Office. The Covanta Waste-to-Energy Incinerator is currently going through the renewal process for their Title V operating permit. A Title V operating permit is the official document covering all applicable regulatory requirements for the air quality program and is issued to facilities that are major sources of air emissions. The facility was first granted an operating permit in the early 1990s. Since then, the permit comes up for renewal every five years. The current permit expired on September 2, but since they submitted a complete application on December 23, 2020, which is more than six months prior to the expiration, they met the regulatory requirement, and all terms and conditions of the expired permit are continued pending our decision on the renewal. During the permit renewal process, our permit engineers will review each of the operating sources and any associated control devices to ensure they are operating in compliance with their current regulatory requirements. They will add or update any new or revised state or federal regulations covered in their operating permit, such as the Reasonably Achievable Control Technology or RACT II requirements. However, what is not required during the renewal process is applying standards that are meant for newly constructed sources. Only those regulatory requirements that apply to existing sources would be added to the permit renewal. Once the draft renewal permit is complete, along with our technical review memo, the notice of intent to issue is published in the Pennsylvania Bulletin. The company is also required... The company is also required to publish a notice in a publication of general circulation. Our Pennsylvania Bulletin notice was published on August 21, while the newspaper notices were published in the Daily Times and Sunday Times on August 31, September 1 and 2. Within that notice, we also published our public hearing, which was held virtually on September 22. Comment periods and public hearings allowed the public the opportunity to comment on decisions before the department. For this particular project, the comment period is open from August 21 until October 4. All comments, whether delivered at a DEP hearing or submitted to the department in writing, carry equal weight and consideration. It is, it is important to understand, however, that comments received at tonight's hearing are not automatically included in that comment period. A commenter would need to submit those remarks directly to DEP for consideration. In addition to the public comments, EPA, as well as any affected state that is within 50 miles of the source, also have an opportunity to comment on the draft permit renewal. Once all comments are received, we will start to address them in a comment and response document. When the comment and response document is complete, it will be placed on our community information page, along with the transcript from the DEP public hearing. The address for this page is DEP.PA.gov backslash Covanta Del Val. A final decision will be made on the renewal, and any person submitting a comment during the official comment period will receive the decision along with the comment and response document. This will also be placed on our community information page, and the decision will be published in the Pennsylvania Bulletin. As with any final action of the department, any affected party will have a right to appeal our decision. This information is made available at the time our decision is made. Because this is a major facility, subject to the provisions of the Title V of the Clean Air Act, any commenter that does not agree with the decision made by the department can also petition the EPA to review our decision. The petition shall be based only on objections to the permit that were raised during the public comment period. In closing, if you would like to submit public comments on this project or find more information, the best way to do this is on our community information page at DEP.PA.gov backslash Covanta Del Val. This includes the email address RA-EPSEROAQPUBCOM@PA.gov, as well as the mailing address for submitting, for submitting comments. Again, comments are due by close of business on October 4. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I think that's it for our, from the Department of Environmental Protection. Our next speaker is Michael Van Brunt, Senior Director of Sustainability at Covanta. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Members of council, members of the public, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. What I'd like to do first is just introduce our facility in Chester. Opened the facility, the facility was opened in 1992. We took, acquired the facility in 2005. Currently, the facility processes up to 1.3 million tons of waste annually, and with that waste, we recover energy enough to supply approximately 48,000 homes, recycle enough metal to build 45,000 cars, and we also help reduce greenhouse gas emissions on a life cycle basis, which I'll touch on a little bit later. The waste we receive at, at the Chester facility comes from the rest of Delaware County, Chester, Philadelphia, New York City, and surrounding communities. The facility also employs 105 full-time personnel, nearly 30% of which live within five miles of the facility. And these employees are doing something that's, you know, very difficult and very important for our society, which is really, how do we address our waste management challenge? And how do we do it in as a sustainable way as we possibly can while meeting the needs of today and tomorrow? A good guide is the Sustainable Waste Management hierarchy that both the US EPA and the European Union both employ. One of the things I like to stress about the solid waste management hierarchy, particularly with how the Europeans look at it, is they draw a very distinct line between prevention and the rest of the hierarchy. Everything we put out onto the curb has an environmental impact. It really then just becomes a matter of how do we minimize those environmental impacts to the extent that we possibly can. So efforts that the Solid Waste Authority and that the county can take with regard to zero waste are laudable and important in this effort so that we can reduce those impacts to the extent that we possibly can. Where our role is, and where the Chester facility's role, is recognized as a preferable alternative to landfilling, yet not as preferable as composting, recycling, and reuse. One of the main drivers of that benefit is becoming very important, and that's greenhouse gas reduction. Waste energy facilities are able to reduce greenhouse gas emissions relative to landfilling, and that's recognized by the European Environmental Agency, IPCC, which called waste energy a key greenhouse gas mitigation technology, World Economic Forum, and the Obama Administration's Clean Power Plan before it was derailed by the Trump Administration. In addition, waste energy facilities generate carbon offset credits under the verified carbon standard and under the Clean Development Mechanism. This is really important today because we're becoming increasingly important for us to address methane. Methane is a very potent greenhouse gas, and landfills are the third largest source of methane, both domestically and globally. And in fact, the United Nations Environmental Program recently released up a report that said methane is the strongest lever we have to address to help solve the climate change issue. None of that is important if we can't operate the facility well. And when we compare our facility's performance against federal guidelines, we admit we're below, we're anywhere between 45% and 99% below the federal guidelines, depending on the pollutant. Now, many have brought up, I think quite appropriately, how does that compare to standards for new facilities? And the performance of the facility compares very favorably and comparable to standards set for new units, both by the federal government, as well as by the European Union under their Waste, the Combustion Directive, as well as an example in a Durham York facility that was built up outside of Toronto in 2015. With a notable exception here of NOx emissions, we are below all of those standards in the actual operation of the Delaware Valley Facility in Chester. The next slide, I won't read through all the details, but as you might imagine, when you're comparing different limits from different jurisdictions, there's a lot of conversion factors that go into it. Much like we use pounds and Europeans use kilograms, there's a lot of different ways that those emissions are monitored and measured, but I wanted to be clear that in terms of the details of that comparison for your further reference. Again, standards are immaterial if we're still having a large impact on the local community. And so one of the things that we took a look at was the national emissions inventory and looked at the entirety of the emissions within Delaware County. And the facility is generally a small or minor contributor of most major pollutants, representing about 10% of the total emissions of NOx in Delaware Valley and Delaware County. Also about 8% or 9% of the SO2 emissions, roughly 2% of PM10, and less than 0.1% of VOCs.
Mr. Chair, let me know, it's five minutes.
Permission to continue?
How long is your presentation, Mr. Van Brunt?
I have a few more slides. I'll, I'll be done quickly.
Okay, thank you.
Also important to note is that the facility compares well with other facilities in the state with regard to NOx control. The facility averages around 113 parts per million of NOx, which is well in line with other facilities in the state, depending on the technology. Most importantly, when these facilities have been reviewed by professionals for communities, the overwhelming result has been that these facilities, when operated properly under new permits and existing permits, do not pose a significant health risk to the local community. We're also very active in the community. Members of the, the facility have been working with the community in terms of things like save your souls, food distribution, and working with the Chester Upland School District. And lastly, I want to focus on what are some of the steps that we're taking now, because it's very important for us to be able to continue to improve our performance. We have started posting all of our emissions data online for all to see and have access to. We have received approval from the DEP to complete a NOx emissions reduction trial. We are looking at studying our engineering group in terms of an activated carbon for additional dioxide and mercury reductions. And lastly, we have an open invitation to all members of the public, as well as to members of the council, to come visit the facility and have a chance to understand what it is that we do, meet the people who do it, and have a chance to have an open dialogue about what we do at the facility. So thank you very much for your time, and I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, and thank you for coming in. Any questions or comments from council?
You know, one thing that has been expressed in various meetings, you know, during public comment, has been about how and how Covanta monitors the various items. And I have to admit, I'm confused because I didn't take great notes when I did the tour. And, you know, I'm hearing that the monitoring is not continuous, the monitor may or may not be in the stacks, you know, the monitor doesn't monitor at a certain standard. Can, can you describe how you are monitored, how you monitor where the monitors are, just so that I have it from you, and then, you know, other people can obviously contest that if they choose?
Sure, happy to. So, and again, all of this is covered in our Title V Permit as well, so that's another resource that's available to sort of go through what our monitoring is. We monitor the facility both continuously and through annual stack testing. For continuous emission monitoring, we measure continuously for CO, carbon monoxide, which is a surrogate for how well the combustion process is, is going, in effect. So that's telling us how well are we destroying things like VOCs, other persistent organic pollutants that might be in the waste that comes into the facility. We also measure for opacity, which is a, a measure related to the amount of particulate matter that's in the stack. We measure for NOx emissions continuously, and we also measure for SO2 continuously. On the stack test side, so there's a variety of different stack tests that we have to do, which cover things like particulate matter, but do it from a more specific standpoint. So we'll measure what's called filterable particulate. We also measure certain parts of the particulate, including PM10, so we get an idea of like how much of that particulate is there in the stack during a stack test. We also check for metals like mercury, cadmium. We also measure for dioxins. And one of the important part of the stack test is that the stack test sets the operating parameters that we have to adhere to through the rest of the year. So what the stack test is really doing is it's making sure that the way that we operate the plant is, is achieving the environmental protection that we needed to achieve. So when we do the stack test, for example, that sets our steam limit and how much steam we can produce at the facility. It also sets things like the backhouse inlet temperature, which is a very important parameter when it comes to things like mercury control. So those all become part of our then requirements for operation for the rest of the year.
Thanks, Ed, and that was helpful, and just knowing I can also get more specifics from the permit was helpful. Thank you.
I just have a question about one of your slides. It said that, I think it said, more than 90% of the vehicles, the trucks are low emission. Can you explain a little bit about what that means and how you verify that? Do you have an emissions checker every time they come in and?
No, what that's really based upon is, so it's all metal and waste trucks with Philadelphia and New York City waste are low emission trucks, and that's really based on the emission standards for the vehicles themselves, based on when they were placed in service, in terms of the EPA regulations. So trucks have been, over time, subject to lower and lower standards with regard to particulate SO2 emissions from the US EPA. The trouble with trucks typically is that the fleets, they're on the road for a long time. So as those standards have been in place, you know, the older trucks kind of roll off. So it's based purely on sort of the emission standards that those particular trucks are subject to and meet. We don't do actual monitoring of the trucks.
So if they were all brand-new trucks, they would be low emission?
That's correct.
Right, okay.
Now, importantly, they wouldn't be zero emission. We would need to, to look at something like an electric vehicle.
You know, one thing we've heard about the truck coming, the trash coming from New York City is that it's supposed to be, it's theoretically being brought down by train, but in fact, it's brought by train to Wilmington and then trucked up from Wilmington, Delaware. So we're kind of getting trucks coming from both directions on 95. Has, has there been any consideration by Covanta of, have you looked at any rail spurs or sidings where maybe there could be a, a shorter distance and perhaps now with the availability theoretically of some infrastructure funding going to no emission transfers? I mean, have you, have you looked at anything like that or considered anything like that, given that the trucks are, according to residents, another problem with the Covanta facility?
Sure, I understand. I mean, it's, it's certainly something we can look at again. I wasn't involved personally with the siding of the, the rail infrastructure. I know some challenges that do come up, is available space, do you have enough space to sort of unload, offload the, the rail containers, store containers? But that's certainly something that if we have not looked into recently, we can certainly look at that again.
Continuing on this discussion about trucks, when you look at your pollutants and you had a, a chart up there describing the, the pollutant levels, how do you consider or account for the pollution that the trucks might emit coming to your facilities? Are these numbers inclusive of that?
They are not inclusive of that, but that's certainly something that we could take a look at. Certainly, mobile sources of pollution are a major contributor. Generally, when you look at the air emissions inventory, you're only getting sort of a real broad snapshot of all the trucks on the road. But that's something, certainly something that we could look at to see, okay, what actually is the contribution of the trucks that come into our facility? Realistically, it's probably going to be a, a minor contributor to the overall facility footprint, but certainly something that could be done.
When you say it'll be relatively minor to the overall facility footprint, can you expand upon that and explain how you arrived at that conclusion?
Sure, I mean, part of it is just sort of some experience looking at some of the data. We've done some analysis of, you know, for example, what's a, a long, a long haul truck trip, what the emissions are from that relative to, say, emissions from a facility. Generally, a single truck is, you know, a relatively small contributor to the local air shed. One of the other things that also I think is important to take a look at too, but obviously there's a difference between, you know, a truck that's at the street level versus the stack that's designed for meeting air pollution control requirements. I mean, one is, one is right in the neighborhood, you know, the other one is, is not. So that's something you would want to look at as well.
And could you, do you have a sense of the number of trucks? If it's 1.2 million tons of trash that's hauled there, how, how does that translate into a number of trucks on an annual basis or a per day? Or I guess we could do the math either way.
Yeah, I mean, so generally, you know, a truck is going to be anywhere, depending on what kind of truck it is, a capacity up to 20 tons, you know? So it, it is a significant amount of trucks. It's also important to look at sort of what the routing of the trucks are. From my understanding, a, a good portion of the trucks come in directly from the south of the facility, I'm sorry, from the north of the facility. So that's something you'd want to look at too, in terms of what's the actual geographical location of the trucks. But generally, a truck's capacity will be somewhere in, somewhere in a neighborhood of 10 to 20 tons.
Okay, so that's, so we're talking about, I'm afraid to do the math out loud here, we're talking about something along the lines of between 50 and 150,000 truck visits every year.
That seems about reasonable, yes.
Okay, and if we divide that by, do more math here, divide that by 365, I can't do it with the six and a five in it, but if I divide it by... do it with the six and a five in it, but if I divide it by, but we're talking about, we're talking about thousands of, a thousand trips a day, trucks a day.
Yeah, I mean, I guess we could do it on, I could do it on my phone here quickly.
So it wouldn't be that many.
275 a day.
275 trucks a day, all right. And in my own experience, I drive over the Comer River Bridge almost every day, and there's not a day that goes by that I don't see a trash, a truck that I think is going to that facility, you know? The Comer River Bridge is right around that exchange.
Yeah.
So.
No, that would not surprise me at all. Certainly, the other question is, if the trucks are not coming to our facility, it does have to go somewhere.
Yeah, and, you know, I think that gets to, that gets to a broader issue, and also speaks to another chart that you said, that you said, that look relative to the overall output of this in Delaware County, our share is relatively small. If you look at it relative to the overall output within Chester, it's pretty big. And so if you, if we're concentrating your output plus 200, 300 truck trips a day in Chester, it's a profound impact, and it's made worse because it is in Chester, right? Because we have a concern about environmental justice. There's all sorts of environmental legacies that Chester already has to deal with for things that happened generations ago, but we're compounding it by citing this there, which is, you know, not an uncommon occurrence. I know you guys didn't build it there.
Right.
You did buy it when it was there, so you don't get off completely scot-free, but from my perspective, everywhere I've ever lived or looked, the incinerators are always in the poorest and the blackest communities. And so that, you know, when you speak about what others might say, well, look, these trucks are going to be traveling somewhere, and so others are going to have to deal with this pollution. That is true.
Right.
But doesn't mean that we say, well, okay, since it's going to happen somewhere, let's have it be in Chester. That's not a terribly compelling case for it.
No, and I think you raise a very valid point, and I would extend that point frankly to all waste infrastructure. You know, the waste industry has a historic issue with siding facilities of all kinds, whether that be transfer stations, landfills, recycling facilities. Incinerators have historically been cited in communities of color, poorer communities with disproportionate burdens. So it's a challenge we face in the industry, and I'm not going to deny that. Our role is to perform as best as we can. You know, that's one of the reasons why we've taken a step to look at things like further NOx reduction, carbon injection, working with the local community. One of the things that we have done that I forgot to comment on was that we've been doing local outreach within the community to understand what are the issues that the local community members are concerned about. All of those things are important for us to do as members of that community. And then also with regard to, you know, the air pollution, it gets quite complex because, you know, air pollution is coming in from Philadelphia, it's coming in from the airport. So those are all dynamics that play into what has been, you know, a historically disproportionate burden in the community.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council?
Yeah, I just have a couple. First, I guess you cited a few, in a few slides, that in your, in your company's view, that this is preferable to landfills. And given that, my question would really be, are we seeing more of these built? And are they being built in dense residential communities? When's the last time one of these has been built in a dense residential community?
So the, you know, one example, there's two that come to mind, certainly in Europe. There's a facility actually located, a new facility located in downtown Paris.
Is there any in the US, though? I guess that's really my question.
The most recent facility that's been built is in West Palm Beach, which was located adjacent to the existing facility. That facility certainly is not as close to the local community as the Chester facility is. But there are other facilities that operate, you know, within local communities, including, you know, a facility in Minneapolis, which is right downtown next to the local baseball stadium.
Understood, but I guess, again, my question is, are they being built now? I think, you know, as we just talked about, we are dealing with the legacies of decisions made generations ago, but under our current normatives of what's appropriate, are they being built in dense residential communities? And what I hear you saying is no, that there aren't.
Well, there's, when you, when you say, there's very little development in the United States right now, because the United States does not have very progressive waste management policy. We lag the world when it comes to doing better things with our waste. Part of the problem with that is we don't price environmental externalities of any kind. You know, so when we think about, for example, the discussion that's going right now in Congress with trying to figure out how do we drive toward lower greenhouse gas emission everything, energy? I don't know if that discussion's going to bear any fruit or not. If we turn to a community or a country or a region like Europe, Europe has for decades put significant prices on landfilling of waste through the form of taxes. And what that has done is not only created room for energy recovery, but more importantly, created room for recycling, composting, anaerobic digestion, waste reduction. And those actions, those policy actions that have been taken by the European community have led to development of not only waste energy facilities, because they have been growing and been building facilities in Europe, but all sorts of more sustainable waste management infrastructure. So if we look at where we're seeing more progressive things done with our waste, more sustainable things done with our waste, we are seeing these facilities built in local communities. And one of the things that the Europeans do very well is they'll connect those facilities to local steam loops. So, for example, in Copenhagen, Copenhagen built a brand-new waste energy facility. That facility is tied right into the downtown steam loop and supplies steam for heating homes and businesses. So the reason we're not seeing facilities built in the United States close to communities is really a failure of policy around more sustainable waste management, because we're not seeing any development really of more sustainable waste management in the US right now.
So your argument is that if we were more progressive in our view on putting a cost to environmental impact, we'd actually be building more of these in residential communities?
We would be building more of these facilities that meet all of the regulatory requirements alongside facilities like recycling, composting, and anaerobic digesters.
Okay, my other question is, are there senior executives of Covanta that live within the immediate vicinity of the facility?
Of the Chester facility?
Yeah.
That I don't know. I don't know which positions actually live close to the facility.
I don't have anything else.
Any other questions or comments from council? I appreciate you coming in, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our last invited witness to speak is Mr. Mike Ewall, director and founder of the Energy Justice Network. So we'll ask Mike to take, and we'll, we've allotted five minutes for your presentation, so take it away, sir.
Okay, thanks for having me, Mike Ewall with Energy Justice Network. Let's get this, my slides, okay. So just jump right into it here. Delaware County Solid Waste Authority has a contract with Covanta that's for 300,000 tons per year minimum. We've already discussed that there's a put-or-pay clause in that, so you get punished if you reduce waste a certain amount. They're also able to give up to 450,000 tons per year of ash to the Solid Waste Authority's landfill. It's basically an ash for cash scheme, basically, going on that the county gets cheaper dumping by giving discounted ash dumping to Covanta. Just in the county next door, Chester County, they charge $46 to $51 a ton for ash disposal there. Here, they're charging about 20 currently. So the contract, as we know, expires at the end of next April. Municipalities have service agreements that are currently at 58 a ton. We're expecting that's going to go up by $5 or $10 a ton starting January, and that, we already know where that waste is going, so I don't have to repeat that. About 81% of the trash in the county in 2020 is going to the incinerator, another 17 to the Fairness landfill, and the rest has changed. And if we look at where the waste going to the incinerator comes from, you can see it's from quite a few places over the years, but mostly it's from this area. About 31% is the county, another 31% Philadelphia. The state measures it as Delaware, but it's that rerouted New York trash for the most part coming from Delaware. Now, this gets interesting when you look at where the waste going to the Rolling Hills landfill comes from, because only a quarter of that is ultimately from Delaware County. The other three quarters are waste from Philadelphia, New York, other places that went through one of Covanta's incinerators, not necessarily even the one in the county, and the ash ends up in the landfill. And there's a quarter of it that is just other waste, sewage sludge, industrial waste from New Jersey, parts of Pennsylvania as well. Now, what's so unusual about that is that this is a county-owned facility, and most county-owned facilities don't take waste from outside their borders. The blue line is in-county waste. This is a list of every publicly-owned waste disposal facility in Pennsylvania, and you'll see that Rolling Hills landfill is number one in out-of-state waste, number two in our county waste. So why is Covanta's trash burning a problem? Let's get into some details here. There's been a lot of talk about who's the biggest violator, are they breaking rules? Well, yes. If you look at all the facilities in the city of Chester, since Covanta purchased that incinerator 16 years ago, you'll find that they racked up 320 violations in that time. This is all straight from DEP, and that is exactly twice as much as the second-largest violator in the city, which is the PQ Chemical Plant. Del Cora, a county facility, is not far behind it, the third place. And if you look at them compared to other trash incinerators in the state, five of the six are operated by Covanta, they're the second worst in violations according to DEP's data. The Plymouth one sending ash to the landfill here is the only one that's worst. Now, they're also a top air polluter. They're the number-one air polluter in the city. This is also DEP data. They're number one or two in almost all the chemicals that have been measured, and in this whole seven-county Philadelphia area, they're also one of the top air polluters. You can see in the third column here on different pollutants, most of them, they're number one or two in the county. Now, we have done life cycle analysis of this industry. We've compared incinerators to landfills. This is the same kind of study that you were asking for in your RFP, but this is the one that I conducted using the most comprehensive software available for a Covanta incinerator in Maryland. And we found that the incinerator is far worse than landfills, and that's even if you have to truck it many hundreds of miles away to get to the landfill. The global warming emissions, which is the big blue line, the biggest impact here, even if you give Covanta their argument where they like to say their climate solution and la, 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 they have a lot of mathematical acrobatics that get them to these conclusions. But even if you take that whole blue part out of the Covanta line and pretend they have zero greenhouse gas emissions, which is preposterous, but let's pretend, the rest of the impacts there from particulate matter, toxic chemicals, other things that affect human health, make it worse than landfills anyway. So there's just no comparison when it comes to the full price, and this is a monetized impact. So this is $250 per ton of impacts from incineration that you're not seeing in the bottom line because people in Chester and elsewhere are paying it for in their health bills. Now, in the same study of those incinerator, or that one incinerator in Maryland compared to various landfills, mostly in Pennsylvania.
Mr. Chair, five minutes.
Thank you. We'll get through this soon. Yeah, so there's a few more slides, we'll be there soon. So the trucking, the transportation impacts is, and this is one thing I'll agree with Covanta on, transportation is a small part of the puzzle. The little bars at the top are the transportation impacts, the rest of it is the overall impact with incineration being the red line, landfills being the yellow ones. So where would our waste go if it doesn't go to Chester? Pennsylvania is the largest importer of waste by far for at least three decades now. Those six states shaded are the only ones that have not sent waste to Pennsylvania. And these are the landfills that we have as options. The red one is Rolling Hills, the rest of them are other landfills in the region. There's no shortage of landfills in our region. And when I looked at the latest data that DEP has, the annual operating reports on all 43 landfills in Pennsylvania, which I just got from them yesterday, and I crunched all the numbers, I found that if all six incinerators in Pennsylvania closed tomorrow, Rolling Hills landfill closes, no landfills are expanded at all. And if waste volumes stay at their high pandemic levels, and we keep importing as much as we are, and we don't do anything to reduce waste, we still have enough landfill space in Pennsylvania for 23 more years. And those are unrealistic expectations. There is no shortage of space here. Now, what we did find, and I know Christine has challenged me on this in terms of whether my data is correct, it's actually DEP's data, but Rolling Hills landfill, their data is the one landfill of all of them that is incorrect. Their math on all their last four annual operating reports does not add up. They're having math errors in the reports, and they're the only one in the state like this, and they're the only one giving multiple scenarios of what is possible, and those numbers don't match. Sorry, it's hard to keep talking through this mess. Their numbers are inflated and don't match what their personnel keep telling us, that they're going to run out of space next year when they're telling the DEP that they have a few more years left. So I don't know what's up with that, but it's not that other numbers from DEP are wrong, it's that Rolling Hills is getting it wrong. The rest are all consistent. So last slide here, we have three options. We could stay with Covanta, where municipalities will be paying probably $63 to $68 a ton next year, and pay the $50 million to expand Rolling Hills landfill. This is the most expensive in terms of health and environmental impacts. We could go straight to private landfills. We have a waste management contract, the authority does, that goes through 2030. I think they said 28 earlier, but I read the contract, it says end of 2030. And that specifies it's about 73 a ton next year. And that would likely be lower because there would be a volume discount you'd get if you're going to send them a lot more waste. And you wouldn't need to borrow $50 million to make that possible. So that could, it's a small increase compared to what you'd be paying anyway, and if you do modest zero-waste efforts, then you'll be able to get that down within a few years to about the same price. And finally, if you did use Rolling Hills landfill only for the county's waste and not ash, that could end up being cheaper, but it's hard to know, we don't have good enough numbers from the authority to know how that would compare. But if it were more expensive, obviously, you'd just go to private landfills. So I'll leave it there. There's a full version with a lot more content that people can access if they want to, and more information on our website as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
Yeah, I'm just going to wait till the screen comes up. Mr. Ewall, I think one major discrepancy we heard amongst the presentations was around available capacity. We heard earlier that there really aren't any local options. You're saying we've got, you know, more than we know what to do with. And particularly, you cited waste management as being, you know, sort of the route as an alternative. Anything more you can say on that? I mean, why the certainty that waste management really is a viable alternative to our own landfill?
Sure. So some of those I've heard from have said, well, Fairness landfill is going to fill up, they don't want more than a certain amount of waste. I'm originally from Bucks County, that's the fourth landfill they have, and an incinerator there, so I know they keep filling ones up and then they build new ones. Landfills in Pennsylvania keep expanding, so even though this one is where it is, I don't know if they'll find more space at that area, they keep finding space somehow, but ultimately, they keep expanding other landfills anyway, even if not that one. So the contract that the authority has with waste management, you're locked in until the end of 2030. It has this exclusivity clause, so you can't necessarily go to someone else to haul your waste away. You could renegotiate with them and say haul it to a different landfill, it could even be a competitor, but Waste Management owns 16 of the 43 landfills in the state. So it's not like you don't have options, it's just that the options aren't quite as close. One of them, though, is Western Berks landfill. It's not a huge one, but it does have a lot of area to expand. That's near Reading, and that's owned by Waste Management. It's one of the three private landfills in the same county where Rolling Hills is, so it's about the same hauling distance. So you at least have that as a secondary one after Fairness. And then if you're going only to Waste Management facilities, you have to go a little further, probably either to Northampton County or out to South Central Pennsylvania, maybe Schuylkill County to get to one of the others.
And are those, how do those distances of travel compare to what other counties typically do? Is that abnormal?
It's not much at all. You'd be shocked, just when you saw things like that Oklahoma one sent waste to this incinerator, you know, that's, it's not a lot of tons, it's not all the time, but waste travels pretty far. The idea that the county can send waste only as far as Berks County to dispose of, a lot of places don't have that luxury. New York City is sending stuff as far as here and Niagara Falls on the opposite side of the same contract out of Manhattan. So waste travels very far. We're getting waste from so many different states because of that fact. Other places that are looking to move away from Covanta, like Montgomery County in Maryland right now, is looking at stuff that is in that study with the red and yellow bars, that is in the realm usually of about 100 to 200-some miles from where their center of operations is. is.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, I guess my question is, I am not sure who to believe. I talked to the executive director of the Solid Waste Authority, who tells me that Waste Management, who is in fact contracted to haul our waste, has said they won't take any more than 30,000 tons annually that they're currently taking. And that, you know, we at the moment in our solid waste plan only have three destinations. So we would in fact have to figure out a way to get out of the Waste Management contract and rebid it potentially to other bidders if we don't have among those three destinations a place to take our waste. Let's just assume for the moment that it's not going to go as far as Rolling Hills, or we're not going to get our expansion permit at Rolling Hills, or whatever else. You know, and I'm hearing you say, "Well, that's not a problem." So that Fairless Hills could take our trash because we'd get a discount if we gave them 400,000 tons. So I'm just a little, I mean, honestly, I will tell you, I kind of, I'm really looking forward to the solid waste management plan process because I'm hoping I can get some data or some information directly from the horse's mouth that I can take at face value. Because right now, I've just got two competing statements. And I will also say this, there's a lot of people here tonight who think that we should not extend the contract with Cavanta. The amount of work that has to be done to determine what our options actually are to terminating that contract and to take the numbers that will follow from that, which are clearly going to be increases, and they're not going to be $5 to $10. The cost of debt service alone on expanding the landfill, if that's an option, is going to exceed that. It's not going to get done between now and April. And, you know, that's a problem that I've got as I sit as a fiduciary on the Solid Waste Authority Board, serving all of the facility, all of the municipalities. And I think one thing that I want to put, make clear to people too, and perhaps if he's still here, Mr. McNichol can verify this, my understanding is the city of Chester has its own contract with Cavanta. It does not go through the solid waste. It doesn't use the transfer stations. Is that right?
Chester doesn't take their residential trash through the transfer station. They take it directly to Cavanta.
Do they have a contract, a service contract with the Solid Waste Authority?
No.
So they've got their own arrangement with Cavanta?
Well, they still build through the solid waste.
It's still built through the solid waste.
Yeah, all 49 municipalities have service agreements with the Solid Waste Authority, and that's been written incorrectly.
That's not true.
Okay, it's been written in documents, public documents I've read, so maybe they were wrong. But those agreements allow for a $5 per ton discount if municipalities bring straight to Cavanta's, through the transfer stations, $53 now is to $58 a ton. So it does allow for that even within the service agreements. But I'm sorry, were you done?
But I guess, I guess what I just want to say is, how, why should I trust your information over what I'm being told by the director of the Solid Waste Authority? And I don't mean that as a confrontational thing. I mean literally, why, like, how do I know?
Sure. Well, first of all, I cite everything. Second of all, most of what I cite is DEP's own data. And third, I'm not necessarily...
But DEP's own data isn't going to tell me whether Waste Management will take more than 30,000 tons.
I was just about to go there. That I don't know. I'm not claiming that Waste Management is going to take more at that specific landfill. What I do know, though, is that they amended that contract four times already. It's not a big deal if they want to sit down with Waste Management and say, "Hey, circumstances have changed. We're not in with Cavanta anymore. Can we sign up with any of your other landfills that do have enough space so we can take more than 30,000 there?" And I think, I think it's actually 70,000, but we should get back on that because there's a price break at that, and I think the county's been over it. But whether they say, "Okay, well, Western Berks can take some," or other ones further out can take some, and it'll cost you a little bit more because it's an extra county away, you know, that's something that could be negotiated in amendment. I don't think Waste Management is going to take kindly to you breaking the contract this many years early. But they can amend it and surely cut a deal that involves other facilities. You don't have to be stuck with only three options.
I mean, I'm sorry, just also to break the stalemate there, the easiest thing is just to actually talk to Waste Management, right?
Exactly.
And so I think we can just speak directly with them and see what they have to say.
Yeah, and I know we heard from Mr. McNichol early that the Solid Waste Authority has been studying other options. And I would presume one of the other options you've been studying is, hey, would Waste Management haul it somewhere else? So I, you know, I appreciate that. The contract is up in April, but I'm sure we've been thinking about this and looking at this before, so.
I have just one question. I, many of my colleagues in the environmental world, in a general sense, not in this particular matter, prefer or advocate for trash to steam over landfills because of methane and the magnitude of the negative effect methane has on our greenhouse gases. So have you done any kind of calculation or thought about 400,000 tons of trash now going to a landfill and producing methane and what that means to our impact from Delaware County?
I'm so glad you asked that question. So yes, that is part of the life cycle assessment that we did at the request of the county executive in Montgomery County, Maryland. We looked at not just the methane from the landfills, we looked at everything. We looked at how much rainfall is going there and how does that affect methane generation? We looked at how are they processing the gas and how does that affect emissions? We looked at, of course, hauling distances. And we did this with the latest IPCC data on how bad methane is, which was not the one that just came out, so it was the one before that. But that actually makes it a little bit worse. It's 86 times worse than CO2 over 20 years. We looked at the 20-year impacts, which are the worst-case scenario you can look at in terms of how bad methane is. So we wanted to take a real look at that and not just kind of softball to make incinerators look worse. We looked at the way that basically is the most favorable to incinerators by making methane as bad as it really is. And we looked at that, and we found that even the global warming impacts from incinerating waste, and even with extra trucking, which turned out to be a tiny piece on top, it's worse to incinerate because all the paper, all the things that you throw into that incinerator, all that carbon immediately is injected into the atmosphere through the smokestack at Cavanta. Now, you throw this into a landfill and the paper will degrade, excuse me, the paper will degrade quickly enough and you'll get some methane and CO2 out of that. But other things, like the plastics, you burn this and that's going straight up the smokestack at Cavanta. But you truck this in a landfill, and most of that's going to sit there for a really, really long time. So at a landfill, yes, you have the methane, but most of that's captured and turned back into CO2 when they burn it. But a lot of carbon gets sequestered in that landfill over time. And what does leak out also leaks out over time, which is a thing that we don't have right now with global warming. So you can't escape that with an incinerator because all the carbon has to go into there. There's not really much of a choice where else it's going to go. But at landfills, some of it is sequestered, and that's what makes the big difference there.
I got to think, you know, this has got to be a question that lots of communities are asking all over the country and the world. Are there other, you know, no offense, I mean, just like larger sort of national-level resources or universities that you can sort of point to that show exactly what you're saying here?
I'm pausing because I'm just like thinking, universities, they're not usually weighing in on this as much, except a couple out of New York City. One is, one is funded by the incinerator industry to put out stuff in favor of them. And the other one is kind of run by folks that I know that are trying to do the opposite. So there's no unbiased information out there. But if you look at what the life cycle assessment that we did for Maryland shows, and you're welcome to question me and drill, and just deep into the wonkiness of that that you want to, you'll find what's really going on with this. And as far as environmental community folks, Mr. Shafer, you mentioned that people you know in the community are favoring trash to steam. Well, first of all, there's no trash to steam. It's a PR term. They're not turning things into literal steam. It's that and lots of other stuff. But environmental groups are not in favor of incineration. You'll find one group that is, that's paid by Cavanta, $50,000 each year, Center for American Progress. You'll find some other groups that are paid by Cavanta that are academic institutions that are promoting them as well. But you won't find any environmental groups that aren't paid by Cavanta that are promoting incineration. They are opposed to incineration if they have a position on it at all. You can find that Str Club and all sorts of national environmental groups. American Lung Association's been very vocal in this over the years. So it's pretty lopsided in terms of who's on what side.
Thank you.
Thanks. So I just wanted to bring it back a little bit to the calculations that you had of the possible options. Can you walk me through how you got to like the $71 to $73 per ton?
Sure. Let me just jump back to that real quick. So the private landfill option, that is in the contract that the Solid Waste Authority has with Waste Management. And so basically, there's a starting price in there, and then a cost escalator per year is a certain consumer price index that they reference. So I looked that up, did the basic math. You can do the same. I'm glad to point you to where to find the specific CPI that they're referencing, and it gets you to these numbers. So it's just a very simple calculation from the contracts.
Thank you.
Sure.
So I was interested, and I'm not sure that I understood exactly, the one slide that you had, I like colors, so I'm a USA Today kind of guy.
Looking for the scroll.
That had all those, they were speaking about the monetization.
Yes.
Yeah. You know, I think Mr. Van Brunt from Cavanta rightly pointed to the fact that we don't, in so many of our policymaking decisions, we don't consider externalities in making those, in making those decisions. There are, which, and if you were making, if you were a rational economic actor, one would take those into consideration. We've spoken a lot earlier tonight about the, you know, the cost for not using Cavanta, the fact that we would have, we'd have to pay $2 million to cover the, for cover on the landfill, and that we would lose $9 million in revenue from ash that we take from them. And the net result of all that was, was something along the lines of, you know, perhaps $50 a ton. But that doesn't include the externalities. Is this chart, was this an attempt to, are those numbers on the left dollars per ton?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't label the dollar sign on this chart, but yes, those are dollars per ton, that's standardized too.
And that was meant, this is meant to, could I use this as a, as one measure of the externalities that one pays?
Yes. Yes, they'll probably be worse at this incinerator because the one in Maryland is, they actually mentioned how, well, back to your question of are they building new ones? The last new one, they built a new location in the US, was 26 years ago in Montgomery County, Maryland. That's the one that the county executive's trying to get closed down, and that's what this study was for. But that one is not as dirty as this incinerator in certain ways, especially on particulate matter. So this one would actually be even worse in this case, but it's about the same general idea.
Yeah, and I think one of my, one way that I look at this chart is I think that all of those, not all of those externalities, but I guess everything above the blue, maybe I'll ask you this, everything above the blue, those externalities are borne by the community that, where the incinerator is cited, correct?
They get the worst of it, but these emissions don't just fall on the Chester city borders, obviously. So a lot of this does travel fairly far. There's some pollutants that are heavier, like polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, they're pretty heavy, it's the stuff in cigarette smoke that causes cancer. They'll drop more locally. But the most toxic chemicals known to science, dioxins and furans, which are not even in this analysis because we couldn't get the data. If we did, it would probably be more of extreme disparity. They travel as far as the Canadian Arctic. So you really have a whole range, and some of them like that, and mercury get into the food chain. So that's why you can't eat the fish in the Delaware without mercury warnings, which Cavanta is the biggest contributor to in this county. So it really varies depending on how people are exposed. It's not just air, it can be food as well.
All right. I guess the last question I'll have is that, how do, how do you think about the fact that one of the benefits from Cavanta is that they actually produce energy? And that the, the energy that would be, that's produced there, if not produced there, would be produced by some other means? And there would be costs, environmental costs for those other means in the absence of it being, you know, by windmill or solar, I suppose. How do you, how do you calculate that? So to my way of thinking, that should be sort of a credit. So we have all these debits for the environmental cost to Cavanta, but there's, in fairness, there should be some credits given as well. How, if at all, does, does the community who's analyzing this consider that?
So in a lot of life cycle assessment models, usually they do count that and say, "Well, the incinerator's producing more energy than the landfill gas burner, so we're going to say it's offsetting fossil fuels." And that's an assumption that really varies per state. So in Maryland, for example, trash incineration is equal to wind power in their state renewable energy law. And so if they shut down Cavanta, the utilities will have to meet that obligation by buying wind or solar, something else that's in that same category in that renewable energy mandate. Now, in Pennsylvania, and the reason why the RFP that your county put out on this specifies that will not count fossil fuel displacement, just like this model did not do, is because in Pennsylvania, trash incinerators compete in a tier-two with waste coal-burning facilities, but also hydroelectric dams. And those waste coal-burning facilities are already locked up. They've basically sold as much energy as they can. There's not much more they can crank out that hasn't filled up that tier-two requirement in Pennsylvania. Which means that if Cavanta shut down, utilities have an obligation to buy an equivalent amount of power from something that is a zero-emission source, is not displacing fossil fuels in that sense. And it can be argued all kinds of ways. But even when we redid one of these analyses for DC and another Cavanta incinerator, almost as big as this one, in Northern Virginia, and we assumed straight displacement of coal, we just assumed the worst-case scenario, let's assume all of the displacement is a coal plant that would have to be operating more if Cavanta weren't there. Landfills were still preferable in that model to incinerators. But it closed the gap a lot. It was narrow at that point, but it was still clear in that worst-case scenario that incineration was the worst option.
Any other questions or comments from council? All right, thank you, Mr. Yu.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. We are now going to turn to the public comment section of tonight's meeting. And I am going to ask Mr. Martin to, to serve as the, to read the rules and regulations for this evening's public comments.
Okay, and literally, I'm not reading the handout that was given to you, but provide sort of the overview of how we're going to handle this. Close to 40 of you have signed in to provide public comment. So the way this will work is Mr. Lazarus will work down the list. He'll call a name of the person who's going to speak, and he'll call a second name of the person who's on deck. If you hear your name as being the second speaker, we ask you to come up here and stand in the corner of the room, off to the side. And then after the first speaker, we'll repeat the second speaker's name. The third speaker will be identified, that person will come up. The theory is there should always be somebody waiting to come up to speak. There will not be a last call, does anybody else want to speak? We have the list at this point. We'll be working our way through the list. Each person only speaks once. There will not be an opportunity to go back. There's not an opportunity to respond if you don't like what you hear. The first thing we're going to ask you to say is your name and your address. And by your address, we don't mean just your street address, we mean your municipality. You may know where you live, nobody else knows where you live. If you're hesitant to say your street number for some reason, fine, give us your street, the name of your street, and your municipality. There's value for council to understand where you live, to provide some context of where you live. And where you live, even if you don't live in the county, we're still going to hear from you, say where you live. Council is unlikely to be engaging in the same kind of question and answer with the many public speakers that they did with their invited speakers. So don't take offense if you're not asked questions or if there's no comments. I'm sure council's looking forward to everybody's opinions. But again, we have a lot of folks to hear from. If they do decide to ask you some questions, that will stop the clock. I'm sure council will keep that in mind, that if they are asking questions, we will stop the time. This is your opportunity to share your opinions and essentially educate council. This is not a question-and-answer session. So don't come up and start asking council questions, they're not going to answer them. You certainly can provide a rhetorical question, people do that. But if you ask a question, just stand there waiting for an answer, we'll assume you're done, and we'll move to the next speaker. You have five minutes. People have often said they're upset that they don't get a warning. We have a little county flag. At four minutes, I'm going to put that county flag here. So if you see the flag put up, you'll know that means you got a minute left. If you didn't notice me put it up, but you look over and you see it's here, you'll know that you're in your last minute. Your time starts when you reach the podium. in your last minute. Your time starts when you reach the podium. If you need to gather your notes, if you need to bring up your remarks on your phone, feel free. But know from the time you get to the podium, your time has started. There's no need to take the entire five minutes. You will not feel, people will not think less of you if you don't speak for five minutes. You all remember your history that Abraham Lincoln delivered the Gettysburg Address in three minutes. So, short comments can be valuable. So, you have up to five minutes. You don't have to take five minutes. At the end of five minutes, I will say, the speaker's time has expired. That does not mean, let me provide my closing comments. I have one last thing to say. I'll wrap up now. When I say the speaker's time has expired, you're done speaking. And if you keep speaking, I'm going to keep speaking. We're going to be here till 11 or 12 o'clock tonight. You have to have rules. The rules are five minutes. Given that, if you have something you really want to say, say it at the beginning. Try not to build up to a crescendo because you may be off on your time, and you're not going to get to the point you want to make. You'll have five minutes. All that being said, I apologize if I sound like a very grumpy old man. We appreciate the folks, the fact that you're here. Council appreciates the fact that you're here. There's great value as a community and a county for what we're doing here tonight. So, now we'll get started with public comments. Mr. Lazarus will read two names.
And if I could just add one last note on that point. Look, we will be here as long as it takes, but I only just do the simple math. It's been a day of math, right? Forty times five minutes is about three and a half hours. So, you know, I think, not out of the respect to us, because we are your servants, but out of respect to those who are further down the list, if you feel as if someone who prior, has really made the point quite well, don't feel of, you know, a social obligation because it's your turn on the list to still come up. If you really feel like what you intended to say has already been really well said, don't feel the need to do it again.
Thank you. I apologize in advance for any of these pronunciations. I'll do the best I can. Our first speaker is Ms. Mayfield, and she will be followed by Mr. Lasensky.
Good evening, council and members of the public. First of all, I want to say that if council really wants to, I'm sorry, yes?
Name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Zuline Mayfield, 800 Berkeley Street, Chester, PA. Chair of Chester Residents' Concern for Quality Living. We just sat through an hour and 50 minutes of infomercials, but this is supposed to be about the public. So, I think that council should be more considerate on different forums. I think that the presentations that were made to you could have been done in a different forum, and that way, we won't be here till 11 o'clock at night. I don't even know what else to say to council for doing the right thing. I've heard every reason as far as financially why we can't get this. The number one health threat to Delaware County, it's not just Chester. It's a threat to all of us who live in this county. And right now, we're suffering primarily because of trash from New York, Philadelphia, Maryland, and elsewhere. A point was made as to, yes, Chester does send trash to the incinerator. We send 1.8% of the trash that goes into the incinerator comes from the city of Chester. We would gladly try to find something else to do with it. That's number one. Number two, I'm not going to take up a lot of time. I'm just going to tell members of the community that we have work that we have to continue to do. There are people that sit in positions of authority, and every time we come, we hear why something cannot be done. I think that council and all participating people, particularly the DEP, have a duty to the Chester community not to continue this process of environmental racism in our city. That is what has happened to us. We get all of the hazards and very little of the benefits, very little. Covanta talks about they generate electricity for 48,000 homes. I don't know no damn body in Chester that gets electricity from Covanta, not near a house, not near one, not near one. They employ six people, six people from the city of Chester. You send poor kids to Washington after you've poisoned them to death. They probably get down there and can't even breathe to get off the bus. So, let's talk in terms of real life. Yes, there are things that council has to do and must do to do, to have a complete record, and we applaud that. We know that you're doing your hardest and your darndest. And we will continue to encourage you to do that. But be seekers of, the finder of facts. We as a community should not have to come out here and try to give you all of the facts. We will do our very best, but I'm not a MIT or Harvard grad. I can tell you what we experience. We read the data just as well. And Mike reads the data. You can read the data. They got a website. It's up on DEP's website, the violations and the things that Covanta is doing in our community. A little while ago, a gentleman came up here and said that county council has to decide whether or not Chester is going to be a neighbor or a dumping ground. I can't tell you how that thing penetrated my soul. It penetrated my soul, and it actually hurt. We know that we've been the bastard child of Delaware County, but Delaware County has also built a lot of wealth off of that little community called Chester, a lot of wealth. All of the wealth of the county was built off of that city. A lot of the grants that Delaware County that distributes comes off the statistics of poverty and crime from our city. So, it's disrespectful to come here and say, well, oh, it's going to cost us $5 more to find an alternative. At some point or another, we have to start weaning ourselves off of the pimp of Covanta. We cannot just say, oh, it's there. It's going to always be there. We have to start somewhere. And let's start now. Let's start today. We should have started 20 years ago. We cannot continue this. The health of our communities, not just Chester, all of our communities can't take Covanta. You better leave me alone. I'm going now, but you know, when, when you had the presenters up here, the industry, they ran over. So, I just want to make that point, but thank you so much. I'm going to take my time.
So, our next speaker is Mr. Lasensky. Mr. Eckert, Mr. Paul Eckert is next. Howard, repeat that other name. Mr. Eckert is next.
My name is David Lasensky, and I come here as a citizen of Boot Road in Newtown Square, Pennsylvania. And I'm also, I've been in the recycling business for over 45 years, and I go back to when mandatory recycling first started with Act 101, I think it was, and did business with about 20 of the 49 municipalities in Delaware County. And I was always an advocate for not commingling recyclables. And that's a war I lost. And what I've noticed at my house and my recycling bin, I'm the good guy here. I'm not, I'm trying to eliminate trash. My toter is picked up every two weeks, and it's, it's full at least once a week. But what I've come to realize is the bulk of what's going in those recycling toters is cardboard, Amazon boxes. It used to be newspaper when everybody read newspapers before digital technology. So, 90% of the paper is cardboard. And how I really noticed it is one of the municipalities started coming in with just the paper, because they have, they supplied two toters, one for the 90% cardboard and one for the commingled material. And the amount of money that is saved by that municipality bringing in 90% cardboard in a trash truck is a savings of over $200 and some dollars a ton, because they're paying around $150 a ton, $150 a ton to dump commingled, to have it separated, and they're getting paid for the 90% cardboard loads that come in. So, one suggestion I have is have two, two toters at everybody's house, one for the cardboard, which is the bulky item, which takes up all the space, which discourages people from even using their recycling container because there's no room. And recycle, in other words, if you go down to Covanta and look at the tipping floor, you'll see tons of cardboard. So, in other words, there's so much paper that's not being recycled because there's no room in the toters for every two weeks being picked up. My suggestion is give everybody two toters, one for the paper and one for the commingled, and you will, I think you'll eliminate 20,000 tons a year. That's just a fair guess. And I got a lot of experience in this, so believe me. That's probably right. Maybe 20,000, it could be 25,000 tons that will be taken away from Covanta and will be recycled. And the municipalities will get paid, and they're going to save with a margin of $250 a ton, $240, somewhere in that area. The other thing I wanted to bring to your attention is eight years ago, when fuel oil was, regular oil per barrel was $130, $140 a barrel, we started recycling shingle, asphalt shingles, because like 39, 40% of an asphalt shingle is oil, tar. And we were grinding them up, and the only state that was, Pennsylvania would not take them because they had to study it. But Maryland was taking them, and they mixed it with regular asphalt, and were paving the roads. So, when you talk about infrastructure, I mean, it's common sense. So, most asphalt's oil. So, by mixing the shingle with the asphalt, Maryland was paving the roads like crazy. And then when the price of oil fell, they were discouraged. It kind of went away. But now we're going back up in oil. But the fact that the state of Pennsylvania had to study it, and it's been eight years, and I had not seen a study, a report on their study, is just bureaucracy at its extreme. And I'm just making you aware of something like this, to push in the State House to research it more, get it done. It shouldn't take, well, it's never been done. So, I'm talking about eight, 10 years ago. And we were, I'm talking thousands of tons that could be useful used. The last thing I want to mention is glass. You know, everybody sees the recycling picked up, and it's by a rear-end trash truck, and the thing comes down, and all that glass gets broken. And if you think that glass is recycled, you're crazy, okay? That glass is ending up in the landfill. And I think the best thing you can do, because when I was a kid, I used to go to construction sites and pick up soda bottles. I'd get two cents for a little bottle, and I'd get a nickel for a quart bottle, okay? And go back to deposit laws. So many people be employed if we go back to deposit laws. The fact of the matter is the glass lobby is just like all of the Fortune 500 in America who are taking over everything, and, and they want to make glass. Owens Corning wants to make glass, and they want to see that.
Speaker's time has expired.
Thank you. Mr. Eckert, our next speaker is Mr. Roots.
Paul Eckert, Tinnicum Township, Mohican Street. Sorry, I did that in reverse. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. The few things that I've, comments I had tonight is that everything that I've heard so far is the economic impact to the county residents here will be a little bit too much to handle for the local taxpayers. You need to look at also the wear and tear in the local municipalities, the townships, as far as taking trucks further away to landfills. There's a lot of hidden costs in that. There's man-hours. There's the beating up of equipment. Again, everything is adding up to economical costs for the county. The other couple of comments I had is on some of the questions that were directed from the council to the presenters, and some of them I would like to say is, one, was the truck traffic. Yes, there is truck traffic, but I live in Tinnicum Township, right by I-95. There's the Blue Route. There is a ton of traffic on the Blue Route on a daily basis. Probably a lot less traffic is going through the trucks than there is sitting on the Blue Route. Again, truck traffic, you have Tinnicum. Sorry to reference that, but that's what I know. You have two facilities there. So, the truck traffic is all over the county regardless of what, where you live. You're going to have truck traffic. So, you should take that out of your equation as well. The last comment is, the question was directed, how many Covanta executives live in Chester? Do you ask that question to Scott Paper? Do you ask that question to Philadelphia International Airport? Because I know airport is a large part of the county, and there's a lot of people, nobody from the airport lives there as well, for executives. So, with that, please take into consideration the economical impact that this is, your decision's going to have. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Roots, followed by Mr. Ales.
Stefan Roots, West 9th Street, Chester, Pennsylvania. Good evening, county council. Thank you for this public hearing. It's been very informative. Over the past 30 years, county council has insisted the county's trash get burned in Chester. Evidence shows that all of the polluting industries in and near Chester, the trash incinerator spews the largest amount of the largest variety of pollutants known to cause the type of health disparities Chester residents suffer at a much higher rate than in other, any other place in Delco. What you decide based on testimony today has tremendous impact on what happens in Chester moving forward. Our future is squarely in your hands. We need you to take an informed, intelligent, visionary approach, and not the same old tried and true political approach like your predecessors on county council. Continuing to allow the county's trash to be incinerated contradicts the public health objectives of the county in a way that disproportionately impacts a community which is already at risk for bad public health outcomes. I care deeply for the future of Chester, and the future of Chester rests in the hands of our children. How can Chester thrive if each generation of children are bombarded with poison impairing their prospects for success due to illness like asthma, because they're hobbled by these poisons so early in their critical development years? Most of you didn't have these issues growing up. You've had the privilege to attend some of the best universities. You've achieved tremendous success that will last for generations. But I see every day an awful lot of people, especially young people, who will never come close to achieving at that same level because of pollution and sickness and poverty, and people in leadership positions ignoring them and dismissing their potential. The county's website says the mission of the Delco Health Department will be to build healthy and thriving communities. I fully expect to take on the role of Chester City Council in January, likely to lead our public health department. In that role, I anticipate working arm-in-arm with you, Dr. Taylor, and the Delaware County Health Department to create and deliver needed and long overdue health and wellness services to Chester residents. A healthy Chester is so critical to a thriving Delaware County, and only a bold visionary approach from leaders working in lockstep on that common goal will ever make it happen. Thank you, Dr. Taylor, for championing a health department in the county, and I can't wait to work with you to prioritize a dramatic improvement of public health in Chester. It all starts with the five of you taking a stance against incineration in Chester now, not later.
Mr. Ales, follow up, Mr. Foster.
Well, I'm not used to addressing people like this. I'm kind, this is my first time, oh, I'm sorry. See, you can tell I'm not used to addressing people like this. My name is Rich Ales. I live at 310 Park Avenue, Swarthmore. And you know, that's important because Swarthmore Council actually passed a resolution to support zero waste, which actually I support, right? Not bad. But I'm in staunch disagreement with their decision to go against the continuation of the Covanta, the Covanta contract. And I'll tell you why. One of the reasons why I got involved in this whole issue is that I like to go to the newspaper and read facts. When I read information that is not based on fact but is accepted as truth, that gets me upset, okay? So, one of the things that I, that got me upset with the recent hearings that I think occurred in these council chambers and were reported in the Daily Times was, as Mr. Roots has suggested, that Covanta is a primary cause of asthma, cancer, and all has suggested, that Covanta is a primary cause of asthma, cancer, and all kinds of other diseases in the city. Even tonight, we were told that the health, the health concerns of the citizens of Chester are most important with this. But you know what? I went down to visit the plant, Covanta. Has anybody here visited the Covanta plant? Yeah, good. Well, you know that a baseball player for the Phillies could strike a home run and hit it into the borough of Traynor. Traynor is right next to the Covanta plant. I'll tell you what, take a look, right there, I made a little indication where the Covanta plant is, right? Traynor, Marcus Hook, and Lower Chi Chester actually are closer to the Covanta plant than most of Chester. So why aren't we concerned with the people of Lower Chi, Traynor, and Marcus Hook? That starts to get me concerned that we're not dealing with fact here, we're dealing with an emotional response to, you know, a poor community that is being used to actually promote an agenda that I don't think is beneficial to this, to this county. All right? One thing, I was recently in Scotland, right? And I interviewed a person who works for Vegware. Vegware in Scotland and in the UK produces 400 products that are sold to institutions, right? And what are those products? Those products are food container products that are compostable, right? Compostable. And they're compostable by industrial composting companies that exist all throughout Europe. We don't have those companies here. Just like this gentleman from Covanta said, we concentrate more on fighting and stopping things, right? Instead of actually trying to promote better, better examples of them, or better, better ways of doing things, all right? 400 of these plants exist in Europe. Why do 400 of these plants exist in Europe? You think that Europeans are like stark raving mad about, you know, they're in love with pollution? No! Those guys, just like this gentleman from Covanta said, they have actually perfected waste to energy so that it advantages their community instead of disadvantages. If I were in your position, what I would do is start to consider ways to incentivize Covanta maybe to get better. Maybe you need to find some educational resources coming from Europe to see if Covanta is meeting up to their standards, and if not, try and figure out ways to make it better. In the end, you know, I agree that we're headed towards zero waste. I agree that, you know, we should do more effective recycling, but I think that this, this factory, this manufacturing site can be a part of that process rather than be a negative to it. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
The next speaker is Mr. Foster, followed by Ms. Saul.
Thanks so much for your time this evening. I'm Bill Foster. I live on Strathhaven Avenue in Swarthmore, Pennsylvania. And I just wanted to make a comment and a request. And the first comment is, you know, one thing, it is so tough to know what is in the air you breathe, where it actually came from. And so we can look at the sources and what the large sources are, but we have to all know that a very small source right next to us may be more hazardous than a very large source that's hundreds of feet up in the air. And so when a piece of air floats by you, a small particle, you can't ask it, hey, where did you come from? And we do see situations like the wildfires in California where, at least the worst air quality I've experienced here was from those fires. And when I talk with people from DEP and EPA, for them, air quality is a national, it's a regional issue, and their permitting process really envisions the damage to large areas. And so a question that you'll have to grapple with is, do you trust their processes? Do you believe their processes? So that's my comment. But the request I had was regarding, I think we, most of us, all of us probably agree, whether we use a landfill or whether we use an incinerator, we would prefer as little as possible to go there. And so recycling is important. And so Mr. McNichols talked about the position that the county has of the county recycling coordinator. And he describes some of the duties they have, and you can see that their plate is pretty full. They have to run the hazardous waste pickups, they have to tally all the numbers from every generator of recycling. It's a lot of paperwork to do. And yet there's more important work that was originally envisioned in the legislation that created that position. And one of their key responsibilities originally envisioned was that they coordinate among the municipalities, that they create best practices, that they help create group contracts and best program designs. In order for us to send as little as possible to the landfills or to an incinerator, we need to be smart. And if each municipality is working on its own contract with recyclers, and each municipality has its own program design, you're very unlikely to have an optimal system. So I'd request that council resource that position, that function, better. It needs more. It could do so much more for this county. Thank you.
So the next speaker is Mr. Saul, followed by Ms. DeChivo.
Yeah.
Sir, out of respect for Mr. Lazarus, we need to keep our mask on so that we.
You have to keep it on?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
My name is Andrew Saul. I live on Second Street in Media. I wrote a letter to the Enquirer, and I did send a copy to County Council. But I would like to just pose, oh, four questions. I feel I'm, I'm an advocate for the taxpayer. I also feel the same way about the environment. And I also appreciate Chairman Zidex's two remarks about environmental justice. So the four questions are, will there be a difference in tipping fees at the landfill for incinerator ash and the raw ash that we might send there? I ask that because incinerator ash is quite inert and can simply be buried and forgotten, while trash after landfilling will need to collect the methane generated there, and that's not cheap. Second question, will the Marple Transfer Station have to be rebuilt at the Delaware County's expenses, expense? You know, ash compacts pretty well, but the, but just raw trash, you know, is more of a problem. You don't want to be carrying air to, to Berks County. Another question, because Delaware County is currently obligated to haul all of Covanta's ash to the Berks County landfill, what will it cost the county to get out of that obligation if you decide against renewing the contract? And maybe this was explained earlier, but I, my hearing isn't very good. And will, and also, will the county have to pay the disposal fee as well as the hauling fee at the, wherever they landfill it? And there, as we've seen, they're likely to go up considerably. Recently, Pennsylvania, question seven, has written, written up a Pennsylvania Climate Change Action Plan. Would either of your options to continue to use Covanta or haul the trash to Berks County meet their requirements? DP isn't going to like the 100-mile round trip to your landfill. That is somewhat avoidable. So, in a recent letter of mine to the Enquirer that calls for sensible recycling, curbside pickup of green compostables, when I say simple sensible recycling, I don't mean glass and if you just recycle at curbside aluminum tin cans, and tin cans, and one and two plastic bottles, that's all that, right now, I believe, is making, you know, it makes money to recycle. The other items, paper and, and other plastics, you can.
Speaker's time has expired.
Time is expired?
Time has expired.
Okay.
Thank you. Ms. DeChivo will be followed by Ms. Lemure.
My name is Giovanna DiQuiro, and I live at 26 Hillborn Avenue in Swarthmore, which is about four and a half miles from Chester and the Covanta incinerator. And I think I'm going to, in the interest of time, cut, cut my comments. I, I wanted to obviously focus on the major topic that we're, we're talking about today, on the, on the topic of waste management, particularly focusing on incineration. I think that many of us have raised this issue over the course of the last couple of hours, that incineration is a, a technology that tries to solve a problem that is getting rid of waste by creating more problems, that is hazardous air pollution. So here in Delaware County, the harmful air pollutants that are emitted by the Covanta incinerator have disproportionately affected the health and well-being of some of the most vulnerable and marginalized residents in the county, the residents of Chester, who for decades have been living alongside, getting sick from, and often dying from exposure to the air pollution admitted, emitted by the incinerator. And this, as, as others have mentioned, but I think it needs to be reiterated over and over again, is an issue of environmental injustice. I'm not going to talk about the levels of pollution that the incinerator emits. People have done that very well over the course of the last several hours, but I just wanted to add one, one additional point and to emphasize that the public health problems associated with incineration really must be seen as, as an issue of environmental justice and as an issue of civil rights. And since it receives federal money, Delaware County is bound by Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. It's bound to not take any action that has a discriminatory effect on racial minorities. And moreover, County Council has a constitutional obligation under the Environmental Rights Amendment to the Pennsylvania State Constitution to not violate people's rights to clean air. Therefore, the county is legally obligated to make decisions that do not result in yet more pollution in Chester, again, which is an environmental justice community that has for decades been overburdened with high rates of pollution. And Chester has, has for years suffered from the cumulative impacts of harmful emissions from many major polluting sources in the city. And I think that the evidence shows that the Covanta incinerator clearly produces the lion's share of those emissions. Given all of these issues and based on constitutional and federal Civil Rights Act directives, I urge County Council to take action to ensure that the Delaware County Solid Waste Authority terminates this contractual relationship with Covanta. And I just want to say that I've been teaching environmental studies for three decades. Currently, I teach at Swarthmore College, and I'm deeply proud to say that a group of my students are here. These students are environmental studies students, and they have, they're young people who come from all around the country, and they're worried. They're worried about their futures for all kinds of reasons, especially global climate change, a deteriorating, deteriorating environment. What, what, what will the future of their communities and their health look like? And rising injustice around the world, including environmental injustices. And I think that these young people are really looking to our public officials, to our elected leaders, for leadership. And they are very committed to seeing a world that is more just.
Speaker's time has expired.
Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Lemure, followed by Ms. Slater.
Howard, press one more time on that second name.
The next speaker after Ms. Lemure is Ms. Slater.
Hi, my name is Meg Lemure. I live in, in Philadelphia on Cedar Street in the Port Richmond area. I'm here today because I was raised in Delaware County, and I've lived most of my adult life in Philly, which means that my trash has been burned in Chester City almost my entire life. And I'm here in solidarity with Chester and will fight for their residents' health. Because today I want to talk about the health effects of living near an incinerator. Health studies have, over the years, found connections between living near an incinerator to cancers, heart disease, birth defects, respiratory problems, and other health impacts. In 2019, a study published in the International Journal of Environmental Research and Public Health sums up some of that research by saying, people living in proximity to an incinerator have an increased risk of all types of cancer, including stomach, colon cancer, liver, renal, lung cancer, gallbladder, bladder for men, non-Hodgkin lymphoma, leukemia, and childhood cancer and leukemia. Other studies have reported increases in respiratory diseases or symptoms in communities residing near incinerators, specifically in children. Epidemiological studies on incinerators have shown an excess risk of cardiovascular disease and urinary diseases. So I'm going to take this a little personally for a minute, because when I was five, my family found out that my sister, who was eight at the time, had developed brain cancer. The tumor, the size of my fist, was growing rapidly in her very small little head. She battled that cancer for five years before she asked my parents to stop putting her into surgeries that couldn't promise anything. And she died when she was 13, and I was 10. I was raised on battling cancer, and excuse my French, but it sucks. I would like, I would take a guess that everybody in this room has known somebody who's either fought cancer or another serious health issue. And we can rattle them off in a meeting. And we can rattle them off in a meeting, but I'd like to just take a moment to, like, talk about how much that sucks. Like, it drains bank accounts, it fractures families, people get their arms amputated, their legs, parts of their body, their spirits are broken. And it can kill people, obviously, among other things. We have to take an opportunity here to protect the health of the people who are affected by this incinerator. It's a decision that you can make. Incinerators release chemicals. Chemicals create, these chemicals create health problems. Therefore, incinerators create health problems. It's a pretty easy step by step. And I would ask you not to let polluters take away your common sense. They'll tell you that they're monitoring emissions, and they'll pay scientists to fix the numbers that might make everything look like it's okay, but emissions monitoring data and tests concerning other pollutants are underestimated, since the industry refuses to use modern, continuous monitoring technology for most pollutants. And federal and state environmental agencies don't require it, which is a little ridiculous. So, we have a good idea of what these pollutants can do to humans and environmental health, but there are thousands of studies out there talking about chemical exposures, and we're learning more, like every single day. However, what these, a lot of these studies are leaving out are the racial health disparities that are there, and/or reflecting on the impacts of chemicals on more sensitive populations, such as women, children, the elderly, or people with compromised immune systems or existing health problems. So, so-called "safe" and allowable exposures to these chemicals are based on one chemical at a time without looking at the burden of accumulated chemicals in a body over a lifetime, which other people have mentioned before. So, Chester's population, obviously, as you know, is mostly black and brown, and this is an environmental justice community. They have been so much already, been through so much already, and they deserve every protection in the book. So, I hope you give it to them.
Ms. Slater will be followed by Mr. McLaughlin.
I'm Nancy Slater. I live at 4 Knoll Road, Lansdowne, Pennsylvania. When will Rolling Hills landfill fill up? DCSWA's landfill manager says as soon as April or May. DCSWA's chief operating officer says next October. DCSWA's latest annual operating report filed with DEP says the first half of 2024. And if they did their math right in their annual operating report, the real answer would be at least October of 2025. Now, how long would an expanded Rolling Hills landfill last? Most people say 10 more years. One DCSWA board member, John Butler, recently states that it's 17 more years. The DCSWA does have a hard time getting clear numbers straight about the landfill, but one number is clear: Since 1989, 75% of the tons of waste piled up on that rolling hill is not from Delaware County. And in the past couple of years, it's been even worse. This is highly unusual. Public landfills usually are reserved primarily for the use of the county that owns it. DCSWA is operating this public asset, this public asset, like a private landfill, and pulling in waste from out of county and out of state. 82% of our landfill is being filled with waste that isn't ours, but is ash, industrial waste, construction and demolition debris, and sewage sludge from New Jersey, New York, Philadelphia, and other Pennsylvania counties. And worse yet, they're subsidizing cheap ash dumping by Covanta, not just from their incinerator in Chester, but from other Covanta incinerators. For, and as was cited before, the Chester County Solid Waste Authority charges $46 to $51 a ton for ash, but DCSWA only charges $20 a ton. So, for the expansion, DCSWA needs to borrow, for the expansion of the Rolling Hills landfill, they need to borrow $50 million to build their vertical landfill expansion. This is the one final expansion that they can get under an agreement with Berks County. And to borrow this, they need county approval for a guarantee of that debt. This is your leverage. They need your approval for the $50 million to guarantee that loan. But why should Delaware County borrow $50 million for a landfill where 80% of the space is not for our waste? You do have the power to instruct the authority on what projects they can or cannot do, but you could also take an easy way out and guarantee the landfill expansion only if two conditions are met. Number one, that the landfill space be used only for Delaware County's waste, once any remaining contracts expire. And, number two, no more incinerator ash can be accepted at the landfill. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. McLaughlin, followed by Mr. Del Marco.
Hello, my name is Jim McLaughlin. I live on Rolling Road in Springfield. I attended the last Solid Waste Authority meeting and asked some very pointed questions about any organization who is in the process of going through a major contract review, such as what is your strategic plan? What are the kinds of terms and conditions that you might be considering alternatively to the current contract? Zero. They had not done any strategic planning. They told me that they were waiting on the decision for $50 million and had nothing to say about what terms and conditions, and I'm sorry, Ms. Ruther, you were not there either on the phone or anything, but I did ask, and they had nothing to say about what they had been doing. So, I don't know what they've been doing in the last few weeks since that meeting, but this is something that should have been going on for a long time. I have done and begun my own study of the operations of the Solid Waste Authority. I've provided slides that network, showed the network of the operations. They outline, I want to make sure, it's focused on going directly from the waste tonnage provided by the data from DEP to the expenses and revenues as reported by the Solid Waste Authority in their own audit reports. I had hoped to share more of the model with you, but I'm missing some close alignment to the audit report itself, and I want to be sure. I'm an engineer, I'm a mathematician, I want to be right. Not to be too harsh, I see clear gaps in the audit itself. It's hard for me to tell what's true about their operations. A forensic audit may be appropriate. Moving on, part of my analysis is a set of network diagrams, as I mentioned, that show the flow of money and waste through the system. I'll let you look at those at your leisure, but I wanted to point out a few things. The authority should establish the landfill as a cost center so that appropriate insights can be gained for purposes of strategic decision-making. We can't decide if we don't, aren't able to segregate the actual costs here. It's a real challenge within the audit and the way their accounting goes. We should all recognize today, today being September 30th, that the authority is not just tasked with moving municipal waste in any form, it is charged with the entire zero-waste hierarchy. That is part of who they are, and it's how we see them. They have an obligation to assist and guide municipalities and the county population toward more economically environmentally responsible approaches to waste management. They need to maintain constant vigilance on alternative strategies, which is what's so shocking, that they had nothing to say strategically in planning. They should be constantly looking at alternatives. We should implement a phased strategy for waste management that incrementally and swiftly shifts waste management activities toward more economically and more environmentally sound practices. The new solid waste management plan should drive constantly towards sustainable strategies that are self-funded, as I mentioned only a few days ago, as much as possible through minimal and temporary draws on the county resources. I promised Ms. Ruther that I, some months ago, that I did not want to race to a decision, and I stand by that statement, but my initial analysis, and again, I can't show it all to you because I'm not aligned to the audit, the way I'd like to be. My initial analysis points to a path forward without Covanta or incineration anywhere, but I don't want to put those numbers out because I'm just not confident in them. The authority has those numbers. They have the ability to do this. I will continue to refine my analysis. I'm happy to share it, share the challenges of putting this story together. The diagrams of the networks are there that show them, every pound, every ton of waste moving, how much it costs, each of the nodal steps in it. That is what a model really looks like. I want to stress, however, in closing, that no economic model can adequately measure the human or community economic impacts. This analysis is only part of the story. I'm on the record, clearly, supporting the economic impact in that area, but I don't want to lose the human impact as well. In any way, in any case, I thank you for your general support in making Chester and Delco more vibrant, without harm to the environment or our people. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Mr. Del Marco is next, followed by, I think it's Mr. Budwein from Brumow. Sorry for the pronunciation.
All right, so David Del Marco, Pheasant Lane, Chad Ford. I think I'm mainly representing not only someone who has sent their waste to Chester to be burned my entire life, also someone who's had to breathe it in, the emissions subsequently. But as a member of the younger generation, many of which are here today, a gentleman who came up here a few speakers ago mentioned that we really need to look at the facts, and so I'm going to do a quick line by line of some of the facts that have been espoused recently that don't really hold up. First of all, in fact, that same gentleman ended his speech saying that he's for zero waste and thinks that Covanta can be part of that solution. That is definitionally contradictory. Incineration and zero waste are not in the same boat, definitionally. So, if we're talking about facts, those, Covanta cannot be here if we are going to be actually committing to zero waste. Second of all, a gentleman right after him mentioned that the ash from Covanta is practically inert, you can just throw it on the ground, and I challenge you, if that's the case, if it's truly that inert, to add it to your skincare routine and come back to us in a few months, and we'll see how inert that actually is. Further, we've been, there's this notion that Covanta is somehow a progressive way to handle waste, and that is honestly laughable. There was the question about, you know, what are the universities saying? I'm a recent graduate from the College of William &amp; Mary. I took a Climate 202, a climate change class, where we learned from a climate scientist and geologist how to communicate with, you know, laypeople about climate science and the solutions. At not one point in that class was incineration brought up as a zero-waste or any sort of alternative to climate change. So, I am baffled that that was even brought up, and that waste to steam, quote unquote, is being thrown into the renewable category. Also, take note that this same progressive firm in the spring of 2019 accepted 50% of Philadelphia's recyclables. They deliberately burned half of a major East Coast city's recyclables. That is not progressive. Now, this one really, really got to me. There was this statement by the representative from Covanta saying that they do not pose a single health risk to the immediate community. On one of their slides, they included a picture of them with the Chester Environmental Partnership, an organization that on their website has links to the University of Pennsylvania Studies, citing the health effects that are linked to the industries and waste facilities in, within the community. Being that, the Chester Environmental Partnership has acknowledged that the entire basis of their organization is that there is a link between the health effects there and the pollution that's happening. Covanta even funds the Chester Environmental Partnership. Covanta has accepted awards for environmental justice from this organization. Accepting that award is an acknowledgement of your part in this, your part in this problem. So, it is shameful for you to stand up here and say that you have not caused any health effects when you are accepting awards for environmental justice? Environmental justice is the acknowledgement of that fact. You can't play both sides here. Finally, my last two points to this, I think it's astounding that the citizens and the residents and nonprofits have done more work in finding solutions than the actual people in charge of making these decisions. I feel like Mike's presentation actually gave alternatives that I felt like the Solid Waste Authority was going to provide for the residents. As a resident here, I feel like I'm trusting Mike more with the job than what that presentation gave. So, if there needs to be more people working together, I've been coming to these meetings. We've known about this issue for a long time, and if your job is to work for the Solid Waste Authority, I expect actual solutions and not just waiting for that clock to tick. Finally, I'll kind of bring back the fourth wall. I know that all of you are, you know, you're thinking about the politics of whatever your decision will be. I also work as a Democratic consultant, and I've knocked on thousands of doors in our area, and I can tell you that Democrats and Republicans alike, they want this thing gone. In fact, it's incredible. 95% of the conversations I've had, they want it gone, they don't want it to burn their waste, and I think if you're concerned about your seat, come talk to me, we can talk about it, because you shouldn't be worried about it. Finally, I think that members of the council who are... Thank you.
John Butler, Laura Lane, Marple.
One second, Mr. Butler, we'll start the clock now. Did you hear from Mr. Butler?
It's Ms. Bumon, B-U-M-O-N, I think, for Baltimore Avenue Media.
Mr. Butler, thank you.
Okay. John Butler, Laura Lane, and Marple. I'm on the Solid Waste Authority. Nobody's talked about host fees. I've proposed that Delaware County enact a host fee on outside of county trash that would fund a recycling program. I've only been on the authority about eight months, and I found that Berks County is charging us a host fee, and the big issue with our authority has been it had to be self-funded, and that's why we're taking trash in from other places. Recycling in Delaware County really sucks. There are, there are communities that are not mandated to recycle. When the market, when their economy went bad, they stopped recycling. Now, you're a home rule charter, and I don't know if you can specify that every town has to recycle, but that, you'll never get to zero waste without that to start with. Okay? Now, John Hopkins is now doing a study in the Chester area, and they're tracking the pollutants in the air. They're doing about a month now. They don't, the results will be coming out soon. There are also purple air monitors. This Air Club, I put one in there. The Wagner University put one down there, and this John Hopkins put about three, and they're, and the readings are not that high. They're measuring particulate matter down there. The other issue is really... The other issue is really, whatever the authority does, if we end the contract, that doesn't close Covanta. As long as they get the permit to continue, they will continue there. So all you're going to do, if we end the contract, we're just going to add the cost to Delaware County. Covanta has made a commitment to put some more equipment down there. If you look at New Jersey environmental justice law that has just been passed, it's supposed to be a model in the, in the country. Covanta is an existing facility. They are supposed to make additional ways to reduce pollution. They're offering something. I've talked to them, they have to do something with mercury, and they've committed to that. You know, Chester Environmental Partnership, somebody took a shot at them. It's an environmental partnership. They try to work with industry to save the industry, but also to help the people in the city. It's not unusual for a group to donate money. In fact, our authority was donating some money up in Berks County to a group. And I've asked people in the Chester Environmental Partnership if we could give some money for lead testing down there. Because lead testing throughout Delaware County is an issue, and we did have a nonprofit that did some testing, because children are not being tested. I didn't know, Mrs. Ruther got, I think, got a call from a resident from Gladwin, Glen Alden or something, that two children had eaten lead in their house. The one child is totally messed up, the other one is maybe somewhat okay. Chester and all homes built before 1976 have lead issues. The Chester facility, homes down there are about 1910, 1920. They're all issues of lead in the homes, and we should be addressing lead in the homes. That's a lot of the health issues down there. It's not just Covanta, and when you look at Delco, it's going to expand. New Jersey, they would have real problems, because they're going to be increasing the pollution. And environmental justice in New Jersey doesn't allow that. Also, EPA has a different hierarchy than what is being proposed here. Incineration is better than landfilling in theirs. And Mike, I know we'll carry on about that, but that is there, that is there. And the other thing is, you cannot have zero waste if there's no, nobody that will take the material. And that's, that's another big issue. Question really is, is glass being recycled? What do you count as being recycled? We put it in our bins, and it goes, and we get credit for recycling, but it has been used as land cover. I don't know if you call that recycling or not. There is a more, there is really no market for glass. Somebody said Owens Cohen wants to make more glass. That's not true. They'll take it up in Allentown, but you have to separate it and get it up there.
Speaker's time has expired.
Okay.
Our next speaker is Ms., it looks like Ms. Bumon from Baltimore Avenue and Media.
Baltimore Avenue or what?
Followed by, looks like the last name is spelled I-H-N-A-P from Raynor Road in Chester Township.
Howard, either spell them or just keep going, because if no one's getting up, we've got to keep going.
Next speaker then would be Mr. Lacy. And he'll be followed by Ms. Dulce Amor.
So trying to see if you're trying to get it all right.
No, you're right, you're right.
Okay, so I'm.
You're after Mr. Lacy.
Hi, Chuck Lacy, 526 Avenue of the States in Chester.
I did. Okay, I'm sorry for the mispronunciation.
My name is Mr. Knox, Chester Township. I want you to officially know I'm in trouble, because I suppose I had my wife dinner done about an hour ago. But as I sat here and listened tonight, I actually am the former recycling coordinator for the City of Chester. I managed a waste contract, and also was a host municipality inspector, was, who was responsible for inspecting Covanta. I hear a lot of people stating that Covanta is a major problem with our city, but as I know who, a person who lived there and worked there, have a mentor program as well, is that the opioids, the drugs, and all other challenges that the city faces, when you have a partnership or stakeholder that invest back into the community, it's, I speak more positive concerning that, that organization than anything. Covanta has always found a way to give back to the community. I know, because when we go to inspect them, they don't know when we're coming. We go through their operations records and all the things that they have to make sure that they're in compliance. Typically, they respond extremely quickly. But also, it's a situation, if you darned if you do, and you darned if you don't. Something was said, my education for environmental justice came from CEP. I thank God for Dr. Strand and all those stakeholders in that organization who exposed me to the difficulties that was facing Chester, because a lot of the things that come in that city is misinformation. You cannot get emotional when you're trying to explain to the people who live there, the challenges are happening to us. And so when I hear all the politicizing and the things that go on, I just simply look at that, at that organization to see if they're really trying to make the necessary changes. You talk about the PM, the particulate matter, but no one talks about the millions of dollars that were spent in building that filtration system to limit that before it was done. You know, the changes that are being made to come, to bring that, that facility to a more acceptable partnership with the city. If you're going to speak negative about something, have more than just emotions, because facts matter. I want to thank the council, because you guys have asked some very pertinent questions. You educated me tonight. I was able to listen to you, and hear some of the questions, especially Chairman Zidic talking about the impacts of the different things that affect the City of Chester. We appreciate your support, we appreciate all the information. I'm sitting here, and the first thing hit my mind was, it's like Dallas and the Eagles. You're not going to win. It's just going to do the constant pull back and forth. But it's very enlightening to hear the information that I now could take back to my young people. I was fortunate to take two youth groups through Covanta, so when I educate them on how the trash is processed, they can then go back to their families. For the last six years, Chester's recycling program numbers have gone up. We have programs in every school in the district, and they know our children are being educated, because that's how you make the change. You want the next generation being more educated than we are, so they can face the challenges that are going to come. By no means am I diminishing anything that the environmental justice organizations are doing to try to fight for Chester. I have nothing negative to say about anybody. I just simply say, be fair. Be fair, be honest, and be transparent. Thank you.
Mr. Lacy, and you are followed by Ms. Dulce Amor.
Are you ready for me? Chuck Lacy, 526 Avenue of the States. Mr. Madden, a couple meetings ago, maybe in August, you spoke about needing kind of the key or the way in for the county council to be able to provide direction to the Solid Waste Authority. And we've done the homework, we've gotten you a legal opinion, which I think demonstrates pretty clearly that county council has the authority to provide direction to the Solid Waste Authority on whether to renew the contract with Covanta. And I hope that you will use that key, along with your colleagues, to do that. As you know, Delco once had three incinerators, and the one, and people didn't like it. There were a lot of protests. There was a huge protest in Marple at Pilgrim Gardens, a run, a runic civic association protested the Marple incinerator. 300 people came out. The president of that association called the Marple incinerator "environmental disaster." He said, "We should fight it with all we have. If necessary, we will go to court. We will go all the way." So the county did shut down the Marple incinerator. Now, the Don Guanella property is right next door to that smokestack, and I've heard people speak about the fresh air there. Residents in Delco stopped 13 more proposed incinerators around the county. Media raised hell, Springfield raised hell. But the county built an incinerator in Chester, not for 600,000 people, but for 2 million people, 10 times the size of the incinerator in Marple. The county bought the land, contracted with Westinghouse, approved the design, financed it, guaranteed to burn its trash in Chester, guaranteed to limit the trash it sent to its own landfill, and it guaranteed to fill its landfill with Covanta ash. The Philadelphia Inquirer caught the county's drift in 1992 and described the new incinerator like this. "It rises out of the dirty, crumbling neighborhoods of Chester's west side like a freshly frosted birthday cake. Its complex innards hidden behind white walls trimmed with purple, blue, and yellow." Now Covanta is the self-reported number-one emitter of mercury in Delaware County, but it's all released in Chester. It's a number-one emitter of NOx, but it's all released in Chester. Same with sulfur dioxide. It's a number-two emitter of lead, but it's all released in Chester. You don't need a health department to make a difference here. Some say it doesn't matter what Delco does now, that Covanta will get different trash, but you and the county council are not bystanders. The incinerator is burning trash from Philadelphia and New York City because your predecessors built it to burn trash from Philadelphia and New York City. You're responsible for all of it. New cities will think twice about burning their trash in Chester after you say it out loud, that this is unjust, it shouldn't happen, we made a mistake, we're not going to do it anymore. You can challenge any other cities that attempt to fill the gap at the Covanta plant in Chester. You can join the people in Chester. This is not a, justice is not a passive activity. You can start by not renewing the Covanta contract, and then you can join with the people in Chester to really work towards shutting it down. Thank you.
So our next speaker is Ms. Dulce Amor, followed by Ms. Jevons.
Thank you, county council, for having us public hearing. Ashley Dulce Amor, 1151 Oakwood Drive, Glen Alden. There's a lot of mythology about Covanta and what it means to be in compliance with DEP air permits. Covanta routinely touts that they're 99% below emissions limits and implies that this is true and that it means they cannot be harming public health. I'd like to address six points that show how this is a lie. First, Covanta is not always within their permit limits. They have violations, 320 since they took over the incinerator in 2005, which is twice as many as Chester's second-worst environmental violator. Some violations are for exceeding emissions limits, many are for their continuous monitors being down more than they're allowed to be down, which could mean more emissions violations, but nobody is looking. Second, Covanta's 30-year-old incinerator is held to permit limits that are far weaker than limits for modern facilities or compared to limits in some other countries. If a permit were granted to build their incinerator today, they would not be allowed to operate all their current levels of nitrogen oxide pollution. They would be held to the modern limit of 45 parts per million, requiring the use of expensive selective catalytic reduction equipment. Operating an incinerator with no nitrogen oxide controls at all wouldn't be allowed. Their current emissions levels would be illegal, and they'd never be given a permit to keep emitting 180 parts per million instead of 45. Third, permit, permit limits are not based on health and safety, but are technology-based standards for what the facility can meet. A Pennsylvania DEP air permit engineer admitted this on video years ago at a public hearing. Fourth, permit limits are concentration-based, such as parts per million of air coming out of their smokestack. This means that a 500-ton-a-day incinerator would be permitted to release a certain amount of air pollution, but since Covanta's 3,500-ton-a-day incinerator in Chester is seven times larger, they can legally pollute seven times as much. Clearly, if permit limits had anything to do with public health and safety, companies would not be allowed to pollute more just because they're bigger. There would be a limit over which no one shall cross, and it would take into account the presence of other polluters concentrated in the area. Fifth, with the exception of four pollutants that are monitored continuously, carbon monoxide, nitrogen oxides, hydrochloric acid, and sulfur dioxide, they only test for about 11 other pollutants once a year in a self-administered test under ideal operating conditions that underestimate actual emissions. If we regulate a speeding the way we do smokestacks, this annual stack testing is like setting a speed limit and allowing drivers to drive all year with no speedometer. Once a year on the highways, a speed trap would be set with signs leading up to it saying, "Warning, slow down, speed trap ahead." And the driver's brother would be running the speed trap, since the companies do their own testing. In reality, smokestack facilities are speeding many other days of the year, with excessive emissions during startup, shutdown, and malfunction times when testing is not done. The most toxic chemicals known to science are dioxins and therons, which have created in incineration, by incineration, apologies. These highly toxic dioxin emissions are tested only 12 hours a year. One study out of Europe, where they use continuous sampling for dioxins, found that actual emissions are 30 to 50 times higher than what we think they are in the U.S., when we only look during short-term best behavior tests. A more recent study out of the Netherlands found that actual emissions of dioxins are 460 to at least 1,290 times higher than annual stack tests indicate. The failure to test with modern technology makes it seem as if Covanta's emissions are lower than they truly are. Six, Covanta has been known to rig their tests, both continuous monitors and annual stack tests, at other plants to make it seem as if their emissions are lower than they actually are. We don't know if that's happening here, but we know they've done this at other facilities. Finally, emissions of highly toxic mercury, dioxins, and several other pollutants are at levels that are quite significant, and there's no safe dose of these and several other pollutants. No permit limit means healthy and safe. The only healthy and safe level of mercury and dioxins is zero, which is only possible if you deny this air pollution permit extension. Thank you.
So Ms. Jevons is next, followed by Mr. Danovich.
Latisha Jevons, 216 North Monroe Street, Media, Pennsylvania, right here in Media Borough, so that's the borough, not just the zip code. The thing I'd like to address is, council said that there was no way to expand capacity at the landfill except to build an extension. When I looked up incineration, I was just on Wikipedia, so five, less than five minutes on Google. One of the things I found in the article on incinerators was the argument against incineration is that it negates the possibility of landfill mining and reclamation, which I sort of thought of that as a science fiction thing and was surprised to then find a Wikipedia link, an article, to find out it was a real thing now. But there are people who mine and reclaim landfills to create more space and to get the metals out. So depending on what the trash is in the Rolling Hills landfill, I don't know what it would cost or how many people are doing it, but there are ways to do landfill mining and reclamation to create more space and to get like scrap metal and aluminum out. And I know that aluminum and other recyclables don't always make it to recycle. As a matter of fact, I live in an apartment building, and I'm looking for apartments, and a lot of apartments don't actually offer recycling. And a lot of municipalities, they offer recycling to homeowners and to people that rent houses, and sometimes to small landlords that have like a house divided into three apartments. The borough of Media actually puts all the recycling on the landlord once there are more than four units, and we have plenty of apartment buildings in Media with more than four units. And if Media's any indication, there may be others, but if even a progressive, more forward-thinking borough like Media doesn't require apartment owners to offer recycling along with dump, a dumpster or waste hauler, then I'm pretty sure that other boroughs are in this, and townships are in the same. So we could expand. in this — and townships are in the same. So we could expand recycling by encouraging boroughs or maybe doing something county-wide to encourage that landlords offer it to their tenants, even in a building, not just to municipal homeowners, because commercial — there are plenty of Delaware county apartment dwellers, and not all of them are in these tiny converted Victorian houses, although those are plenty. And we could get a lot more people recycling if they had the option. If apartment dwellers don't even have the option, a huge building of, like, 30 or 40 apartments, that's a lot of recycle that's going in the trash, and that's things like bottles. And even homeowners don't always recycle when they're at, like, outdoor events at the park where we all drink soda or beer and then throw the cans away and don't recycle. I pulled up on my phone that there's two points — in 2018, there were 2.7 million tons of aluminum put into landfills. So there's a lot of things in landfills that we could get out as solid scrap metal and aluminum to create more capacity at Rolling Hills or at other landfills, but it can't be done if we just incinerate that trash and turn it into smoke. And on top of that, I don't see why, if we're still creating a landfill and it's just this small toxic ash, we've actually done anything better. It sounds like all we've done is make the landfill more concentrated and more toxic by using the Covanta ash instead of just the trash, which we could apparently go back and salvage. I don't know what it would cost us to do that, but some of the scrap metal prices are probably enough. If there's enough of it, it might offset the cost and create more space in the landfill, so... And there's a lot of untapped capacity for recycle because of the way our local boroughs and our handle who gets recycle and who doesn't.
Mr. Danovich is next, and he'll be followed by Ms. Needham.
Hi there. I'm Alex Danovich, at Two Whittier Place in Swathmore. I think what we've been hearing a lot about tonight is how waste becomes inevitable when you have this long history of disproportional spending and that you create these systems that are financially reliant on the continuation of waste. I want to talk briefly about the benefits and the externalities of recycling and how they should factor in to change in this equation. I've been fortunate to spend the last 25 years as a social entrepreneur, a consultant, working to develop zero-waste infrastructure and design systems that reduce waste and create viable, thriving businesses. Across the country, zero-waste businesses, including recycling, composting, repair, refillable, and reuse ventures successfully compete in the marketplace with waste disposal every day of the year. These businesses are leading a just transition away from the linear economy and towards a circular economy by creating meaningful jobs in local economic development. We don't have just and thriving communities in our current linear system. Our current model of extraction, manufacturing, consumption, and disposal, take, make, and waste, over and over again, is destructive at every phase, with the cost being borne by the communities. Downstream, we're sending our trash to Chester, where it pollutes the air and water. Upstream, we're destroying ecosystems with dangerous fracking and pipeline operations. And according to the EPA, this whole process of how we manage our material goods accounts for 42% of all greenhouse gas emissions in the U.S. Zero waste is an opportunity for a just transition. As you move up the zero-waste hierarchy, you're not only reducing carbon emissions, but you're increasing job creation. A recent report shows that for every two jobs at the incinerator, there's seven if the material's composted, 115 if it's recycled, and 404 if it's repaired. Along with that comes economic development. In Pennsylvania alone, the Pennsylvania Market Development, or Recycling Market Center, has researched that recycling industry contributes over $50 billion a year to the Pennsylvania economy, supporting 175,000 jobs and contributing $4.4 billion in federal, state, and local taxes. Recycling markets have recently — we've heard challenges with recycling, but the fact is recycling markets have come back. They're very strong right now. This has been driven by domestic processing investments and recycled content, packaging commitments. Today, a typical ton of bottles and cans that are in a single-stream program and paper is worth over $100 a ton. That's too valuable for our community to burn at Chester. Delaware County has the opportunity to be a national leader in implementing strategies that have demonstrated success throughout the country and around the world. These strategies can quickly reduce waste by 50% or more, but will only happen with the political will and investments and systems change. A few points. You know, first, we need to get the economics right. We heard a little bit about that earlier today. Recycling contracts should be structured to ensure that recycling's sustainable in all market conditions, but passes on that benefit to the communities when markets are good. Right now, recycling should be less than half the cost of landfills or incinerators. The county can also use its purchasing power, we heard earlier, to get cost-effective recycling programs on behalf of the municipalities. That's going to ease up a lot of the confusion around what's recyclable and what. I was just on Nextdoor earlier today, and there's a thread of, like, 60 comments trying to decide what's recyclable or not. As we've seen from the recent ordinances passed in five Delaware County municipalities, residents are desperate to understand what they can do to help the environment and the community. And if we give them the right education and we give them the right financial signals, they'll respond. So Save as You Throw, a system that — where you pay for trash based on how much you're throwing away, can quickly reduce trash by 40% and decrease trash and recycling combined by over 20%. This amounts to significant savings as it reduces material that a municipal collection program or private hauler has to pick up. Over a third of our trash is organic matter that can be composted, made into nutrient-rich soil, and used to replenish polluted lands and grow food locally. Right here in Linville, we have Kitchen Harvest that's collecting compost in Media, in institutions across Delaware County. And I think the final piece is that we need investments that promote systems change and prevent waste at the source, such as refillable, the go packaging, reuse, and repair. You know, the — we don't need to reinvent the wheel. There's really good demonstrations out there that work. We don't need new technology. We don't need unproven methods.
Speaker Simon Spire.
So I appreciate the time.
Ms. Needham is next, followed by Mr. Farney.
Hello. My name's Heather Needham, and I am the facility manager of the Chester-Covanta facility. So I have the accountability of operating over 100 employees — with over 100 employees and ensuring the safety and environmental compliance of the facility. Heard a lot of the comments made today, very emotion-based and extremely lacking in facts. I spend just as much of my time in Chester, PA, as I do in my home. It's a full-time job. It's a 24/7 Operation 365. People speak of incinerators, and I'm not sure if everyone knows what they are. I didn't prior to — two years ago, when I started working for Covanta. I'm a mechanical engineer, and I have a background in over 20 years in manufacturing, and I've managed many high-hazard chemical processes before, so I have very in-depth knowledge of what it takes to maintain environmental compliance for Title V and solid waste permit compliance. We have extensive air pollution control systems at our facility. Even though the facility is over 30 years old, we spend over $25 million a year in maintaining and capital upgrades to keep our equipment into the latest condition so that we can make sure we're meeting all of our permit compliance. All of our operators that operate our control room constantly are monitoring trends in performance and make adjustments to make sure we stay within compliance. They're also ASME QRO certified, which is a federal requirement for waste municipal — waste energy plants. Contrary to what people say, it is a fact for EPA that energy recovery is the next most sustainable solution, where landfilling is the lowest. Honestly, taking the job at Covanta, you know, coming from other chemical plants that have had environmental releases before and seeing the effects on the community, I was actually excited to finally have the opportunity to work for a sustainable company. And to my surprise, seeing all of the activists that are against us, it's mind-boggling to me because I think that people are just looking to get on the bandwagon of a smear campaign for a company that invests a lot of money into the city of Chester. We pay millions of dollars in host fees. We support the community. We volunteer for activities. We are willing to be a partner. We are willing to do better. Based on feedback, we are investing a lot of capital and looking at a NOx reduction system. We're doing testing this year. We are constantly looking at how we can upgrade and be a better neighbor. We care about the facility and the community that we are in, and I have a deep understanding of knowing that we have to be partners with the city of Chester in order to continue to have the privilege to operate there. And we do our part, and I'm there on a day-by-day basis. So others might have toured the facility or think they know. I can tell you I'm there daily. And a lot of our employees do live in the vicinity and maybe don't live in the city of Chester right now, but grew up in the city of Chester and primarily moved out because of schools rather than the concern about the air quality in that location. I stand there, ground zero, every day of the week, and see the clarity of the air and breathe it in willingly without any concern for myself. I have to go home to my two daughters without any concern for my own health, knowing the controls that we have at that plant. So it gets me a little emotional hearing what people are willing to say that don't know. People raise their hands that have been to the site. I haven't seen any of you there in the last two years. So again, they think they know more than we do. I get it, but I'm passionate that we are doing the right things and we are providing a sustainable solution to the waste situation. Thank you.
The next speaker is Mr. Jared Farney. Mr. Todd Strine. Ms. Simone Stern.
Is that last speaker in the room that was just called Simone? Howard wanted to do one more, so we have someone lined up.
Sure. Mr. — I'm sorry, your name is?
I'm Todd Strine.
Okay, it's Todd Strine, and he's followed by Ms. Stern.
Ms. Stern's unavailable. Who's next?
Mr. Zarinelli, followed by Ms. McCollum.
Thank you, Mr. Strine. You can proceed.
Thank you. Todd Strine, Riverview Road, Swathmore. Hello, council members. I am grateful to know you all personally. I supported you guys in your election. More importantly, the voters of Delaware County supported you to do big things. And in less than four years, each and every one of you has more than delivered. Chairman Zidek, you held the line on taxes, which a lot of people thought Democrats couldn't do, and you proved them wrong. You fought against corruption and for openness and transparency, and with those principles as your guiding lights, you demonstrated exceptional leadership as the council chair, and you helped this council accomplish more in a shorter timeframe and despite a pandemic than any council chair, I believe, in the history of this council. You guys have all responded by doing amazing things. Councilman Madden, you champion criminal justice in leading the de-privatization effort of the county prison. Councilwoman Schaefer, you fought for the environment, and you delivered on your promise to preserve open space for future generations of our residents. Dr. Taylor, you're leading the effort, the very important effort, to finally establish a county health department, and the mission of that department's going to be building healthy and thriving communities. And Councilwoman Ruthur, you navigated us through the toughest election cycle that anybody's ever seen. And now you're on the Solid Waste Authority, and here we are. We obviously have to do better with the Solid Waste Authority, and you guys are the people to do it. You have the leadership opportunity of a lifetime in this issue. You have the power to begin to reverse decades of death, disease, and decline that was wrought by the terrible decision that this group that you now sit on made more than three decades ago. Each of you has demonstrated by your actions that you're on the right side of history when it comes to the biggest issues that confront any public servant: good government, fair elections, social justice, the environment, and public health. Each of you has stood for those things. All of those issues, every single one of them, coalesce in what we're talking about tonight. I know that's not lost on any of you. The people of Chester are counting on you to figure this out, to act now, not to study it, not to continue the cycle that they've had for more than a generation, 30 years, of suffering the injustices of having that incinerator burning trash, all of our trash 24/7, as well as a humongous amount of trash from outside of this area. There's no reason that the Solid Waste Authority should remain in the trash business. Think about it. You're investing, what, $30 million, $40, $50 million to create a park in Marple, and we're here talking about how are we going to backstop $2 million from not having the ash to cover up the landfill that we own? What are you going to do for the city of Chester? It's great that we're investing in Marple. I applaud each and every one of your efforts. It's great that we're setting up a public health department, but what are we going to do for the city of Chester? Seems to me that there are a lot of obvious things that could start right now. And again, I know you all. I know you're smart people. I know this isn't lost on you. I'm counting on you all to demonstrate your leadership and end the practice of incineration in Chester now. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. McCollum, followed by Mr. Callaway.
Thank you. Elizabeth McCollum. I'm from Media. I live on Glen Riddle Road. I wanted to say, first, I'm a mom and a teacher, and I did move out here partly because of the schools, but our schools are really good around here because a lot of people have a lot of money to pay their taxes, and the way that we fund our schools has to do with who lives in the neighborhood. People aren't going to move into a neighborhood where the kids can't play in the roads because there are trash trucks coming by all the time. People aren't going to bring all their money into a neighborhood where the air is really polluted. There are reasons why the schools are good, and the pollution in Chester is just perpetuating yet another injustice, which is the school systems and the way that they're set up. So I wanted to comment on that. But back to what I had written, there are many issues of public health and infrastructure that could be prioritized, but there's one that stands out strongly at the intersection of them. For 30 years, people in Delaware County have been breathing our trash as we vaporize it at the incinerator in Chester. The 3,500 tons of trash they burn every day turns into toxic ash and air pollution at one of the top air polluters in Delaware County. We can end this toxic relationship as of May 1, 2022. Starting to pay normal trash prices might cause waste disposal prices to increase slightly in the short term. This is only because the county has been subsidizing Covanta's incinerator by giving them discounted dumping at our landfill. We've allowed the Solid Waste Authority to squander our landfill, filling 75% of it with waste that isn't from Delco. Even with the currently skewed waste prices, switching to end our use of incineration by May will not cost a lot, but it could amount to several million dollars a year until waste reduction efforts close the gap. As was mentioned by the speaker before me, Don Guanella. You spent $31.6 million to preserve land in an area where residents are 85% to 90% white white and make more than three times as much as residents around Covanta's incinerator do, county residents who are 70% black. I'm glad to see that the county values the environment for white people enough to throw down that kind of money to do the right thing, creating a suburban park. Of course, Chester's kids near Covanta only have the street to play in and no park. Streets where they have to dodge waste trucks to play ball or ride their bikes, this is an opportunity to show that after three decades of the county trashing Chester, we're committed to environmental justice. Investing the same commitment should be enough to cover several years of switching away from incinerating our trash as soon as the contract runs out by next May. This is enough time to get zero-waste programs up to speed to cut back waste generation and bring costs back down. Five municipalities so far have passed zero-waste resolutions urging an end to this toxic relationship with the residents of Chester. These resolutions have also called for the county to support zero-waste programs such as, also previously mentioned, Save As You Throw, an incentive system used in over 10,000 communities. This system, on average, results in a 44% reduction in waste pretty much immediately. Add curbside composting to the mix, and more than 60% of our waste could be diverted from disposal, saving money and public health. Please commit a portion of your funds to enable the county to end its use of incineration in May and smooth the transition to a zero-waste system. All of us who breathe deserve nothing less, especially those living in the shadow of Covanta's incinerator. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Callaway, followed by, it looks like, Mr. McDaniel, Dutton Mill Road.
Hi. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm David Callaway of Draxel Place in Swarthmore. As a non-medical volunteer with Delco Citizen Corps, I am terrified by the prospect of increasing human and property devastation from climate change, such as we're seeing across the globe. This calls for decisive action by all. If we're serious about facing up to the climate change crisis, we have to ask for and support lifestyle changes among county residents. Leadership and support from government entities is vital. Several municipalities, as already mentioned, such as Lansdowne and Swarthmore, have taken a zero-waste pledge. The county needs to throw its weight behind and leverage these efforts. Wish cycling, is kind of what we have now, isn't working. Even in Swarthmore, lots of garbage is going into the blue cans. How can we tell our neighbors to clean up their act without being labeled jerks? I don't know. I don't tell them. I just get angry and keep it to myself. The county can help with this. For example, when dirty recycled content gets thrown away, it costs municipalities because the haulers charge for every load that they can't actually recycle. And we consumers can lean on vendors like, for example, in Swarthmore, the Co-op and restaurants to replace single-use containers with customers' own containers, the way Asians have been using Bento boxes for decades. Finally, we need a county-wide composting program, as was mentioned. I compost, but most people don't have a remote corner in their yard for what is, at least initially, just garbage. The key to closing Covanta's and soon-to-be IQ corporations -- lost my place -- soon-to-be IQ -- yeah, sorry. Scrolling back. Okay, there we go. Incinerator and reducing trash flow overall is to create less waste. Less waste means less to dispose of. We, all the people and entities in Delaware County, can and must step up to this challenge with commitment that is equal to the global threat we face, and we need the county to take the lead. Thank you.
Mr. Merrick Daniel, followed by Ms. Bowser-Bostic.
My name's Jim McDaniel. I live in Aston, Dutton Mill Road. Can you hear me all right? Okay. No?
No.
Okay. Well, as long as you guys can hear me. I'm an instrumentation guy at Covanta. I work with the continuous emissions monitoring equipment daily. The requirements that we have to meet up to from the EPA are very stringent. And I'm not good at this. But that girl sitting back there in the black, she lives with me. She's been my wife for 25 years. There's no way I would go to Covanta or anywhere else and do anything that was going to put stuff in the air that she's breathing three miles away. It just wouldn't happen. What I had to say doesn't matter because you guys should have the facts from all the documentation that I fill out and many, many other people throughout the year. So I just would ask that you just look at the facts, and that's it. Thank you.
Ms. Bowser-Bostic is followed by Ms. Bell.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jocelyn Bowser-Bostic, and I have lived in Chester since October 1989, which is when my husband and I moved into our first and only house that we made a home, first for ourselves and later for our nephew when he was eight years old. My address is 726 East 25th Street. I want Chester to be a healthy, safe, and peaceful place to live for my family and all the other adults and children living here. But that can't happen as long as we have polluting businesses like Covanta, Delaware Valley LP here. I strongly urge Delaware County Council and the Delaware County Solid Waste Authority to not renew its contract with Covanta. Covanta is the nation's largest trash incinerator, burning up to 3,510 tons of municipal and industrial waste every day. They're the largest air polluter in Chester and one of the top air polluters in the seven county Philadelphia region. Covanta is the number-one emitter of carbon monoxide, mercury, nitrogen oxides, and sulfur dioxide in Delco. These pollutants can trigger asthma attacks, chronic respiratory diseases, strokes, and various cancers. Chester has the highest incidence of childhood asthma rates at five times the national average and three times the rate for children living in the rest of Delaware County, Pennsylvania. Some of the other health and environmental damaging emissions from Covanta are carbon dioxide, particulate and fine particulate matter of two and a half microns, volatile organic compounds, and hydrochloric acid. There are no known safe levels of exposure for the lead, mercury, and dioxins that Covanta emits. In addition to cancer, exposure to dioxin can also cause severe reproductive and developmental problems at levels 100 times lower than those associated with its cancer-causing effects. Dioxin is well-known for its ability to damage the immune system and interfere with hormonal systems. Most trash incinerators have four pollution control devices, but Covanta's Chester facility has the fewest in the nation at only two. And that is unacceptable and criminal if the health of Chester's residents is as important as that of residents living anywhere else. Trash incineration, even with all of the normal pollution controls, is more polluting than coalpower plants and is worse than landfilling the waste directly. When burning trash, 30% of it becomes toxic ash that makes landfills more dangerous to groundwater. The other 70% becomes air pollution. The toxic ash from Covanta Delaware Valley is dumped in the Delaware County Solid Waste Authority's Rolling Hills landfill in Berks County. On September 6, 2021, a total of 233 health journals, including the New England Journal of Medicine and various land sit publications, simultaneously published an editorial calling for emergency action to limit global warming, restore biodiversity, and protect health. Because the planet has been warming for over 30 years, the negative effects on human health and wildlife have become clear. The harms of the greenhouse gas pollutants and global warming, such as wildfires, droughts, floods, the wider and more persistent spread of plant-killing and disease-carrying insects, and increased disease in humans, animals, and crops disproportionately affect the most vulnerable, which includes children, the elderly, ethnic minorities, poor communities, and those with underlying health problems. All these populations are well-represented in the city of Chester. We've already seen some of the above-stated devastating and fatal climate change consequences in the U.S. and Pennsylvania. And if we don't want these changes to become irreversible, as scientists say will happen if we continue polluting at our current pace, then we must act, as scientists urge, by drastically cutting greenhouse gas emissions and making other changes of remediation. These cuts in pollution and the obligatory reforms in the way our societies and economies work and live must be supervised by our elected governments and the Pennsylvania DEP. The pollutants that Covanta and other industries within and just outside of Chester are emitting are driving global warming or climate change. And if Pennsylvania and our local governments are serious about doing their part to fight climate change, promote the health and safety of its residents, and respond for the benefit of current and future generations to the changes already brought to our region by climate change--
Speaker's time has expired.
Okay. Such as increased precipitation--
Speaker's time has expired.
--then Covanta--
Speaker's time has expired.
--should not be allowed to go on. Thank you.
The next speaker is Ms. Bell, followed by Ms. Warren. Joyce Bell. I'm sorry.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Sister Joyce Bell. I live at 1725 South Spruill Road in Marple Township. I'm here to talk a little bit about Covanta and a lot about climate crisis and a lot about ways that we can maybe make our earth a little bit healthier. The climate on our planet is in a crisis. The temperature of our earth is rising, and instead of slowing down the heating, it's accelerating. The biggest contributor to this heating is the emission of greenhouse gases, caused mainly by the burning of fossil fuels. But there are other contributors to these greenhouse gases as well. One of the recommendations to improve our air quality is to end the use of trash-burning incinerators and invest in alternative ways of dealing with the solid waste in our county. At this time, we have the largest trash incinerator in the country located right here in Delaware County in the city of Chester, Covanta. Residents in Chester have been fighting the effects of the harmful pollution coming from Covanta's emissions for the last 30 years. I find that really hard to believe, that for 30 years, people have complaining, have been complaining about a problem. If this is going on for 30 years, there has to be a problem. And so I think it's something that is asking us to address it. Covanta has failed to install two of the four pollution control devices that most incinerators have to reduce air emissions. These controls are for acid gases and particulate matter, but Covanta ranks first in the county for sulfur dioxide emissions and second for hydrochloric acid emissions, and bears the distinction of being the largest emitter of particulate matter of any incinerator in the nation. When asked why Covanta's missing controls for nitrogen oxide that trigger asthma attacks and for the most toxic emissions like dioxins and mercury, Covanta claimed 12 years ago that the cost of installing these safeguards was prohibitive. Covanta still has no air pollution controls in place to reduce emissions of nitrogen oxides, dioxins, and mercury. This makes Covanta the largest single emitter of these pollutants in Delaware County. These pollutants are having a deleterious effect on the health and welfare of the residents who live in Chester, especially the children. These pollutants also affect neighboring municipalities. No one is spared. I live in Springfield now in Marple Township, but for the last seven years, I lived in Secane. I moved to Secane from Virginia. Every single day in Secane, when I woke up, I couldn't breathe. I thought it was the trees around me. I never had allergies in my life. Last year, I moved into Springfield, there's lots of trees around me. I have never awakened in the morning congested at all. Secane is eight and a half miles away from Chester. I just think that what we've been saying all night, what happens in Chester doesn't stay in Chester. It seems like we are at a crossroads now in Delaware County. Do we want to issue permits to a company that is polluting our environment and negatively impacting the health of the residents who live in our county? Or do we want to invest in promoting a waste management system that will reduce the amount of solid waste from our county and use our landfill space for that which can't be recycled or repurposed? We must end incineration and transition to a zero-waste program in Delaware County.
Speaker's time has expired.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Ms. Warren, followed by Mr. Cronheim.
Hi, I'm Kearney Warren, Sandy Land Street in Chester. I want to talk about straw man arguments, but before I do that, I just want to say that this is very sorrowful to me, that I am here having to speak to mostly people who don't look like me, and three of which we share a professional sisterhood. That I have to be here to speak about human decency and respect for Chester, but then again, why would it be anything different? We are speaking about primarily a black city where resources have been stolen and squandered and a city that is ignored except for when deciding on financial issues like where to send the country's trash and the county's poop. Financial costs keep coming up. There's so much money in poverty, right? It produces poverty pimps and grant whores. So let's talk about straw man arguments. There are straw man arguments being used to dismiss those of us concerned with the incinerator and used to discredit our movement against environmental racism in Chester. Some claim we think Delco's Solid Waste Authority ending Covanta's contract will cause Covanta to close. We don't think that. However, we know that doing so is the fastest way to cut back up to 31% of their air pollution and can be a first step towards closing them down. Ending Delco's use of incineration could have immediate public health and environmental benefits. We also know that Delco's ending incineration can inspire other jurisdictions to do the same. Some also claim if Delco pulls out its 31% of waste Covanta burns, Covanta will fill it back up with trash from other municipalities. They will try, but there's no big uncontracted pile of waste waiting for Covanta to pick up. Philadelphia and New York are ready contracts with them, and Baltimore and DC are locked into their own incinerator contracts. And if anything changes, it's more likely they'll end incineration rather than to sign up for more. Covanta would have to take waste away from their other facilities and haul it further to keep this plant fed with another 350,000 tons of waste a year. Another claim is this council's hands are tied, that you can't stop Covanta's contract because you don't control the Solid Waste Authority. That's not true. The Pennsylvania Municipal Authorities Act does give you the power to instruct your authorities from time to time on what projects they can or cannot do. You can also use your leverage with them. They want you to back a $50 million bond with the county's credit. Ask for something in return. You can ensure that if our county tax dollars are used for funding a $50 million landfill expansion, that the expanded landfill is really for us, not Philly, New York, New Jersey, and beyond. Make them commit to only taking Delco's trash, not incinerator's ash. Finally, the idea that there isn't time to change where the trash trucks go by or that it could cost too much isn't a good excuse either. Several places in recent years have had to make plans to end incineration abruptly and unexpectedly and maintain, like one-third of Connecticut when the Hartford incinerator broke down a couple of years ago, Detroit when their incinerator closed abruptly in 2019, DC and Northern Virginia when Covanta's large incinerator in Lorton had a massive fire and closed for 11 months in 2017. We have seven months, seven, and an alternative-- We have seven months, seven, and an alternative contract already in place with Waste Management, the world's largest waste company with sixteen landfills in Pennsylvania. Stop pretending we don't have time to switch at the end of this contract. It costs, it's truly an issue. Why is thirty-one point six million dollars available for an affluent white community in Marple Township to buy a park? But you express concern and are reluctant about a smaller amount to protect Chester's air and end environmental racism. That amount of money could be used to fund several years of a switch away from incineration in 2022, enabling waste reduction strategies to reduce any increase in that timeframe. So please, don't stop at asking DEP what to do. You can and must take action today. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Kronheim, followed by Ms. Zirin.
I live at eleven oh four Colhane Street, Chester, PA one nine oh one three. First off, contrary to what a previous speaker said, in my experience, Chester reci- Chester City recycling is basically nonexistent. We have separate bins for recycling, and the, then the regular bin and the trash bin, it all goes in the same truck, and it all comes on the same day. And I, I mentioned that to a, a city council hearing about a month ago, and nothing's changed. All right. And there's been a few issues that have come up from time to time, and I haven't heard the council respond back if they agree with that or not, if they're going to do further research that or not. And I've done this with emails and vo- and a voicemail, and I've still gotten no response. So, and then you tell me I'm not supposed to ask questions. Well, now if I do that, I'd have to rewrite it, so I'm just going to start asking the questions. If you don't like it, you can try and haul me out of here. First of all, can the Delco Council expand the number of seats on the Solid Waste Authority Board? Has the county solicitor researched and reported on this issue? If the solicitor has not completed this task, when will it be completed and the results shared with the community? Second, does the Municipal Authority Act specificity clause give the Delco Council the authority to approve or deny all projects undertaken by the Solid Waste Authority Board? Same thing. Has the county solicitor done anything on it? When will that happen, and when will it be, what do you call it, shared with the community? That's been brought up, what do you call it, by the previous speaker, and yet I never hear the council saying, yeah, that's true, or it's not, or we'll have to look into it. I want you guys to look into it. I think that's your job. Lastly, the council stated you're preparing an RFP to detail the pros and cons of sending Delaware County waste going to Covanta plant to landfills. When will this RFP be ready? When will it be bid on? And when will the analysis of using a landfill instead of Covanta be completed and shared with the community? Another little topic. No, never. In my opinion, any additional money needed to reduce our air pollution could be taken out of the ARP funds that you didn't want me to talk about on Monday. Thank you.
My name is Patricia Ziren.
Ms. Ziren will be followed by Mr. Morgan.
My name is Patricia Ziren, not Zirin. I live at eleven oh four Colhane Street in Chester, Pennsylvania. It's not all about money and numbers. Young man, I want you to know that no amount of knocks is acceptable, none. Like the friendly old neighbor or uncle who comes in the front door with toys and gifts and cakes and trinkets, but quietly secretly molests the young girls and boys on the sly, taking their innocence, like Covanta quietly is taking our health and quality of life, smiling while raping, which unfortunately has become acceptable and normalized. But it's not normal. It's not acceptable. It is wrong. If you think of all the people and programs that were discussed two nights ago at the meeting on what to do with the Federal American Recovery Plan funds, and tonight is a giant baby, we're washing that baby in filthy water, feeding that baby tainted food, and making that baby breathe tainted air. If we don't wash the baby in clean water, which is impossible because the filthy air is tainting the water, he or she will end up being hard to control, hard to educate, and challenged in how to properly live in the world. The filth of the ba- the filth the baby is exposed to is in our control. Animals don't urinate or defecate where they sleep, but we do by burning all the filth that is flushed down the toilets of our entire town and the filth of other towns as well. This is an infrastructure issue and appropriate to discuss with regard to COVID recovery. People of color and those seeking to change, I'm sorry, I'm so angry I could just scream. And that's why Zulene is angry, because it's ridiculous. You're raping us. You're allowing them to rape us. People of color and those seeking to change and exploit of an oppressive system have disproportionately been repressed, not represented by this incinerator and its usage decision-makers in the city of Chester, PA. In fact, the Covanta incinerator has been in operation, has made the Chester, Chester the poster child for environmental racism, albeit the Covanta Love Canal. One of the most pronounced aspects of white supremacy remains the belief in the superiority of European ideals and the ways of life. While supremacy ignored the knowledge and insights of people of color for centuries, this includes environmental, and this is why I feel using the money to make it possible to stop burning the coun- county's trash in Chester by May two thousand twenty-two. It's for the children upon whom we are currently specifying by writing in putrid ink on their biosphere where they must live. It's an inevitability that it is unendurable, and we can transform it now. Yes, we have the power with this infusion of Federal American Recovery Plan money to exculpate the children's fate into an environment into which they will gladly bring their children into the world cleanly, clearly, safely, and lovingly. Here are some facts. Every year, the Asthma and Allergy Foundation of America puts out a report on asthma capitals. In 2021, the Philadelphia metro area was ranked as seventh worst asthma capital in the nation, down from fourth place in 2018. Delaware County has the third highest cancer rate in Pennsylvania, significantly higher than expected, and Pennsylvania's cancer rate is the third highest in the nation, according to National Cancer Institute. Thirty-eight percent of Chester's children have asthma, as do twenty-seven percent of adults. Chester residents are twenty-five, twenty-four percent more likely to get lung cancer than Pennsylvanians in general, and are fifty percent more likely to die from brain disease and twenty-five percent more likely to die from heart disease than other residents of Delaware County. Chester has one of the highest infant mortality rates in the state, more than twice the state average of six point nine percent. Tell me how you feel when your children's children die. Chester has the second lowest birth weight in Pennsylvania, with fourteen point four percent of birth classified as low birth weight. Based on the National Air Toxic Assessment, Chester is routinely in top one, two percent of air pollution that causes cancer and other health effects. This is an infrastructure issue. Please use some of the ARP money to help move the county off of incineration by May next, by next May. Cancer is a problem everywhere, but it's worse in Philadelphia than in most other parts of the metro area, the state, and similar big cities. An average of just more than-
Speaker's time has expired.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Mr. Morgan, followed by Mr. Jones.
Thank you. Good evening. Good evening. First off, I'm William Morgan, East Twenty-Fourth Street, Chester, PA one nine zero one three. I don't have a paper or anything to really go off of. I just have a few bullet points. I apologize to everyone if I ramble on. Hopefully, I don't get stopped by a gentleman. First off, I am the deputy mayor of the city of Chester, director of accounting and finance for the city of Chester. I wanted to come here to provide some factual information on financials. However, prior to me getting there, I will state a few things. At times, myself and some other individuals who have spoken here this evening as well, I concur with what they've stated. I feel like the city of Chester has more so been some form of a golden stepchild to other municipalities in Delaware County, to Delaware County as a whole. We all know that the city of Chester is the first city in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and at times, we don't get, we don't get treated as such. To, to, to continue on, I do think, no, I do think that there are many facets that are an attribute to the detriment of the health, safety, and well-being of the city of Chester and its residents, and I don't think it just lies on Covanta or any, or on Covanta. There's a few multitudes of things that I believe plays an asset into that, and that can be the, the state highways such as two ninety-one and I ninety-five. That can be the Delkor. That can be other factory type of driven industries on our waterfront as well, not to, not to even speak about Amtrak and the train stations that go, the trains that travel through the city of Chester, as well as our own homes. I know for my parents, I, I know that they annually don't clean their HVAC system, which I tell them about all the time, but I know that that's something directly that can affect the, the air that they breathe. To continue on, there are some things over the past meetings and or organization and groups that have been stated about the contributions to the city of Chester, if at all, anything that Covanta provides to the city of Chester. So like Covanta, like Harrah's, and, and like many other businesses, corporations in the city of Chester, of course, they're, they're required to pay their property taxes, and which they do, Covanta does that. Most, more specifically, there's been a few individuals this evening that have spoke about the host community fee. So Covanta, by Act one oh one, which has been enacted since, I believe, nineteen eighty-eight, Covanta as the operator is, is required to pay the host community a benefit fee, and they've been paying that since they've came on board. In 2020, when, of course, the pandemic happened, there were a good amount of revenues that the city of Chester was unable to receive. Covanta's was not one of them. Covanta honored their host community fee by paying the city of Chester four point seven million dollars, which at that point was about nine percent of our budget last year. In 2021, we have a budgeted, annual budget of fifty-four million dollars, and we are projected to receive four point eight million from Covanta as well. Thus far, I believe we've received two point four million. We receive that on a quarterly basis. By no means am I trying to put a dollar amount on anyone's life, health, or well-being at all. Myself, as deputy mayor of the city of Chester, mayor, and council, all support a healthy, breathable air for the city of Chester and our residents, and of course, for Delaware County. So no, I am not up here picking a side. I am simply here to provide the factual financials that Covanta provides to the city of Chester. That, again, those numbers that I provided to you does not include the real estate taxes, nor does it include the annual contributions that they provide to the city of Chester for its health, I mean, sorry, health and or youthful activity events, specifically for the Chester Fest and or the, our senior, Chester High School seniors that we travel down to Washington DC for many events. So that's what I wanted to come here this evening. Again, I want to state that mayor and council is one hundred and fifty percent supportive on finding out the proper studies that needs to be done to see what we need to do to have clean air in the city of Chester. However, we also want it to be fair and uniform across the board when we talk about the other pollutants that might go into the air, not just from Covanta, if it even happens from Covanta. That's not my expertise. I'm a financials guy. What I'm saying is we want it to be fair across the board as well. So thank you this evening, and I hope everyone makes it home safe.
Our next speaker is Mr. Jones. He will be followed by Mr. Coswell.
William Jones, seven ten Villa Drive, Chester, PA. Good evening, and thank you for having me. As I was sitting here waiting to speak, I was trying to think of what I was going to say. And basically, what came to my mind is, I'm tired of pretending. As a black man in this society, I've been learnt and I've been indoctrinated in how to pretend. I do it a lot. I do it every day. I pretend that the Constitution applies to me. I pretend that wealth and opportunities apply to me in the same as others. I pretend that the judicial system applies to me as the same as others. I do a lot of pretending, and I'm not sure if you guys are doing some pretending. Pretending that you're really taking the seat you have and understanding the cost, the human cost of decision that you have to make. Ms. Ruth, we had a conversation months ago after, after one of the waste meetings. Mike was there. Mike was involved in the conversation, and you had the same conversation you had today with Mike, arguing about whether his information was correct or DEP's information was correct or your information is correct. You've been tasked to know that. That's your job. That's your job. You should have been knew that. And the conversation that we had, where you were saying that you had to negotiate with Covanta if possibly you were to end the contract, so what you're going to do is come up with an RFP for alternative measures. I don't think that's been done yet. And the fact that the reason behind the RFP was to find alternative negotiating was, was, I'm sorry, for a better negotiating platform, not for the safety or the quality of life for the Chester residents, says it all to me. It kind of exposes your true intentions. We had another council member to say trash the steam in a positive way is when it relates to the environment, that to me also exposes your intentions. That's like comparing a fart to ventilation. This is, it's so far polar opposites that it's hard for me to believe that you have a true, true intention of really seeking an alternative measure. We go, another spoke, another person that spoke earlier when us pretend that we were in Germany or Europe, I believe he said, it was four hundred incinerators in Europe, but that's a continent, not a country, not a city. And also, in Europe, they have free healthcare and free college education. So maybe we might be educated enough to know better or had better healthcare to take care of us. We do get sick. So we could pretend to do that. We could pretend all day. But the bottom line is, I also wanted to address some things that I heard other people speaking about, like we just talked about, everything's passion-based. We don't have facts. The facts are there, but the motion become, the motion comes from the facts not being listened to. So, and we're dying because of that. So the facts are there, the information is there, the information's been there. It's, it's well documented. The American Lung Association came here in 2018. Delco was given F for air quality. That's, that's a fact. We got to stop playing games. I want to pretend that you're not placating us with this forum here, just pretending that you're really taking it serious, and then when the clock runs out, you're going to do what you're going to do anyway. I would rather you look me in my face, everybody else in their face, and say, listen, it's inconvenient. The costs are too high. Your lives aren't worth it. Look me in my face and tell me that. Don't play games with me. Don't, don't, you know, try to placate me with words and bureaucracy. Tell me the truth. It's blatantly obvious. It's, it's, we're not going to pretend that this, this end up in Chester, this incinerator just didn't end up in Chester. We're not going to pretend that if they, it was, if it was trash trucks coming up from sunup to sundown in media, Upper Darby, any other municipality in Chester, that it would be acceptable. Trash trucks lined up up and down the street, being parked along the side of the roads, trash juice stinking, just, we ought to pretend when I come in Chester, I don't smell the stench when I, when I, when I come across the board. I got to pretend that. I got to pretend I'm not embarrassed and humiliated behind that when somebody comes with me, a friend or a work colleague, or someone has to come there to smell, I got to pretend we don't smell it. They got to pretend they don't smell it. It's humiliating. It's embarrassing. It's a lot of pretending going on. It's time for action. So you're not going to be able to pretend. You will be judged. Accountability will be had. Is documentaries being, documentaries are being made, articles are being written. You're not going to be able to hide behind the will of bureaucracy and, and fake initiatives. And so when my time left, I just want you, we're going to see, proof's going to be in the pudding. You're going to do what you're going to do, and we're going to judge you by it. Hopefully, you step up and do the right thing. People are dying. It's a human cost involved in this. Okay? My uncle suffered from cancer right now. My ma, my aunt, my grandmother all died. Okay? It's not a game for anybody thinking that-
Speaker's time has expired.
It's not a game. Do your job.
The next speaker is Mr. Coswell.
Good evening, folks. Thanks for listening to me. I'm Pete Coswell. I live in, on Evergreen Avenue in Brumall, and I come on behalf of the Chester Sustainability Project, a student-driven club within the Chester Upland School District. Our mission is to help offer fresh produce sustainably to the population in a food desert. Through grants, we've built a greenhouse and this spring planted, nurtured, and helped distribute hundreds of tomato and pepper plants to community gardens in the city of Chester. Covanta has been an important partner to our efforts, granting us forty-five hundred dollars to install a solar, solar energy system to heat and power the greenhouse with no carbon footprint. We appreciate, we appreciate Covanta's involvement and hope that our relationship- We appreciate Covanta's involvement and hope that our relationship can continue and grow so that we can increase our contributions to the community in the future. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, those are all the speakers who have signed up.
Thank you. I guess I would offer counsel the opportunity, if they have anything to add to this evening's discussion.
I want to start by just reacting to Mr. Jones's comments about concerns that we're just sitting up here, and this is all facade. This is all about placating. You know, there's been a lot of, you know, sitting here quietly behind our masks, but I want to assure you that we've listened to each and every one of you. We've listened to both your words and your heart. It hasn't been lost on us. So our silence is our respect for the words that have been said, and any decision as significant as the one that's in front of us deserves our utmost consideration. So I just want you to know that our efforts here are authentic. There's a lot of numbers that have been thrown around, but to me, this is really, really simple. People don't want to live and work next to a trash incinerator. They just don't. I don't know how many decades of people trying to fight these things we need to see to know that. And they don't for good reason. For all the, you know, the emissions numbers that we've heard and seen, that's just, it's not, there's too much support for the fact that there is a correlation between these statistics and the asthma rates, the cancer rates. We just can't ignore that. So, you know, I think when we talk about a community that has been subjected to literally decades, centuries of environmental racism, de jure racism, it's all the more important that we get this right. And I, you know, I hear talk of the dollars, and I, you know, we all have limited budgets. We all get that, but there is no price that you can put on the life of a child.
Thank you.
There is no price you can put on the sustainability of this planet. And when we're talking about the biggest polluter in the county, when we're talking about getting truly toward zero waste, and we are sincere about it, we have in front of us the opportunity to really effectuate the linchpin of that. We can't keep burning our shit. That's what it comes down to. So, you know, I think we can talk about the way that we get from here to there, and that's all about tactics, and we can talk to waste management, we can do all that, but we have to be very clear about our intentions and what this is all about. And when there's a will, there is a way. So that's all I'd like to say. I really, again, thank you all for coming in. I thank those of you who have stood by to the very end and listened to the rest of the speakers and listened to us. I just don't want to lose sight of the significance of the opportunity that we all have, because we all got into public service because we truly, deeply care about what we can do while we are in this position of having some say in what our lives stand for. And that's really what we have here today. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Any other questions or comments from council?
Well, I would just, I mean, I echo Kevin's comments. It's too late for me to try to be that eloquent, so ditto. I do want to point out one thing, though. This is, as you heard tonight, the common refrain was, what are we going to do with this trash? You know, once we make this decision, there's 400,000 tons of trash to deal with every year, and landfills are not the answer. Landfills are just as bad for the environment. It's just a question of which is more evil in terms of greenhouse gases. So that's not the answer. We, you know, we have to find a way to reduce waste, and that's where our investment has to be. And I'm encouraged, because in this conversation that we're having, it is about, you know, closing Covanta. It is about stopping the incinerator, but it's also, I heard from almost every speaker, the desire to find a better way and to focus on reducing our waste, because that is the only answer. So I, as we go through this, this is very complex. That's not something that's going to happen in six months or a year. It's an entire system we have to change. And I think this board is committed to doing it, but we're going to need the community's support. And I do want to say thank you to everyone for coming out tonight. I learned a lot tonight. I think somebody said it was infomercials, but I actually learned from those infomercials, and I appreciate all the people that gave us information tonight. Thank you.
I guess for my part, I'd just echo the thanks for everybody who came out tonight, both our invited guests and for the public who came out again tonight. You know, from my perspective, it seems like every time we have a disagreement about any policy issue, it's, you're either on the good side or the evil side, and I don't know that that's always the most constructive. I don't, Covanta might be the cleanest incinerator operator ever. They may do their darndest to keep particles out of the air and to otherwise clean what they're doing. And we could accept that and also say, but we don't want you here. We don't want you to burn our trash. They're not mutually exclusive. So, you know, when I have publicly offered opposition to Delaware County burning its trash in Chester, I don't want Covanta to think that's because I think they are a bad actor. I don't, you know, it's not an industry I'm supportive of. I'm not an environmental engineer, but the one thing that I can't escape is that it's in Chester. And I have said numerous occasions up here, I don't find it morally defensible that we could, should send all of our trash to Chester and burn it there. I can't get beyond that point, and I don't need to get beyond that point. Once I reach that point, and I have reached that point, then for me, it's just a matter of, okay, well, what do we do instead of that? So that's where I am. And I think that a lot of the information we got tonight gave us some pretty clear options as to what we can do. We know that if we stop taking trash from other municipalities in our landfill, that's 200,000 tons a year. We know that if we stop taking ash from Covanta, you know, that's something along the lines of another 150,000 tons a year. That means that we could send all of our trash to our own landfill, and it wouldn't fill up anymore quickly. So that seems to be a clear answer, but we shouldn't stop there, right? I mean, I think everybody's in agreement. We shouldn't make 400,000 tons of trash, you know, to begin with. I think, you know, I've even heard Covanta speak of that. I mean, that's not, that's not in question. But all of these things come with their cost. It's inconvenient to, you know, perhaps to compost, right? But it's still, it's still the right thing to do. It might be inconvenient to change the way that we behave, but it's still the right thing to do and still the necessary thing to do. So, you know, again, thank you all for coming out tonight. I think it's useful to have this conversation out loud, a conversation that has been long overdue, to cast a light on this issue that is so, that so deeply impacts all of our county, but especially Chester. It's time to make sure that we continue to have this conversation out in the open and work to effectuate change that will benefit everybody in Delaware County, most especially the residents of Chester.
Mr. Chairman, may I just, I was, I apologize for not getting your attention a second ago. I was debating not saying anything of you of the hour. I just would like to comment on a couple of things. We keep talking about this decision. I just want to be clear, there's not this decision. You know, this council does not get to decide whether the DEP is going to renew the permit. We get to decide are we going to comment on it, and I think we are. There's a letter that we're all looking at to send in as a comment, and I hope it comes from council as a whole. This decision is a series of decisions that we're going to be making here at the council. It's a series of decisions that a board that, as of yet, has not been appointed, a majority of which has yet to be appointed by this council. That will change shortly. One of the questions it has to decide is, is it going to go forward with a contract? And I know a lot of people say you can't put a price on a child. I think that's right, but I can tell you, there is a direct line, a direct line between the choices that are made in the short term and the trash fees that municipal leaders, all of whom serve on the Solid Waste Authority Board, are going to have to charge their residents. And I know the amounts don't seem like a lot, but, you know, I, excuse me, it is my turn to speak.
Excuse me, ma'am. We're going to be respectful. Excuse me, please. We're going to let Ms. Ruth speak, and if, thank you, please.
You know what? I'm done. Thank you. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Any other questions or comments from council? All right. Hearing none, then, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.